Calling to order, this Planning Commission meeting for Tuesday, May 24th, regular meeting. Would you please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, united, God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would you please call the roll?
Sure. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Here.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner McCadden?
Here.
Commissioner Caldera? Here. Thank you. At this point in the meeting, we open the meeting for public comment to the commission on anything that is not on the agenda. You have three minutes to make a comment, but be sure, please, that it is not on the further agenda for the evening. Is there anyone that would like to speak on anything tonight before we get into our regular agenda? Seeing none, then we'll close the public comment section of this meeting. We have no consent items, so we will move directly to number four, which is Continued Hearings, which is a continued hearing for 516 Chapman. This is a design review and variance application number 15-032 for a new 4,001 square foot, three-story residence. This item is continued from April 24th, 2016, public hearing where the commission requested the applicant provide a revised landscape plan. We asked for a number of things that were documented by staff, and Mr. Boyle, this is yours to start the ball with. Please, proceed.
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. Yes, so this is a continued public hearing, so even though the direction from the commission was to bring a landscape plan back, which the applicant has done, there, it is still possible to the, for the commission to discuss the home itself as well. So doing a, just a quick overview, if anyone was not at the previous hearing, the project is 516 Chapman Drive. It is a, for a new, single-family home with a variance to have part of the home within the front setback, located on Chapman Drive, shown on this project location map. Just very briefly, the project meets the floor ratio, lot coverage, building height, and all of the setbacks required for this zoning district, of course, except the, the front setback for the, for the raised driveway and raised walkway. So, this is the original landscape plan that was submitted with your packet back in the meeting of April 26th, and I'll just briefly go, go through these. I won't point out specifics at this time quite yet. This is the second landscape plan that was presented to the commission at the actual hearing of April 26th. This arrived, you know, a day before or so, to staff. So, the final landscape plan is shown here, and I've highlighted two sections of the landscape plan that were a particular interest of the neighbors. The neighbors were concerned, not all, but many are concerned with what I'll call lower Chapman or the north side of the site, and the view of this new, single-family home from that side of Chapman, similar to the, the view, not exactly this view, but, but close to that view, that the neighbors are concerned about seeing. So, those, those are the two locations of the sections, and here, here are the corresponding sections. The project architect is attempting to show, again, Chapman Drive itself, existing vegetation, proposed vegetation, the, the black outline is the size of, of the tree at planting, and the, the larger tree, I believe, is at, I want to say, three to five, three to five years' growth. So, these are the two sections that were requested by, by the commission. The project team has also added, on these planters, to give a little bit more stability to the soil, to the trees, and also in their narrative, they talk about it raised, you know, also raising up the trees somewhat. The applicant has also provided growth projections and photo simulations of the growth along Chapman, looking from the north to the south. So, again, looking across the valley, whoops, looking across the valley, this is what you'd see, their projection after two years. This is what you'd see after 10, and this is what you'd see after five, and then this is showing what you'd see after five years from the west, looking, looking towards the bay, looking towards the east. So, again, trying to get a, get a, a sense of what this landscape will look like in the future. This is, not really, in perspective, you see, this is basically the, the summary of the existing trees that will be, that will remain, and, and also the, the trees that will, that will be planted. So, the applicant at this point is proposing 16 trees to remain, 29, I'm sorry, yes, 16 trees to remain and 29 trees to be planted, with a sum total on the site to be 45. This is another, trying to illustrate what has changed over these several iterations of landscape plans. And this was in your packet, so this is to demonstrate, everything in red is additional planting from the plan set that was given to you at the, at the last meeting. So, the plan set that was, that had a number of purple, purple plantings, so from this to this, everything in red has been added. So, that's, and again, of course, the, the project architect and the project landscape architect are here to, to talk in more, in more detail. As I, as I outlined in the staff report, there are a number of different meetings, a number of different communications, I should say, there was, I should correct, there was, there was one meeting between the neighbors and the applicant team on the site. There were many discussions after that meeting. The applicant has met with the fire department. I have met with the fire department. The new landscape plan meets the requirements of the Corredera Fire Department. It also, I reviewed it with public works staff. They're, they are comfortable with, with the plantings. I've added a condition that when, whoops, if, if this is approved and there are plantings proposed outside of the property line, basically between the property line and the edge of Chapman Drive, specifically in this area, that is an area that's not owned by the owner of 516 Chapman, but is a responsibility of that property owner, and so, the public works department would want to have a maintenance agreement set up if plantings will be, are to be put there. So, if, if the town ever needs to widen Chapman Road or do modifications of Chapman Road, Chapman Drive, sorry, they, they have that agreement and that understanding. Again, many, numerous emails were sent between Friday, when the packet was distributed, and today. I sent you an email of everything I received before, to, before 2:00 today, and then I also put on your place's some emails that I received after 2:00 today. Also, all that, all those emails are available at the back counter, if anybody from the public wants to see those. Resolution has been, has been revised with, with new dates. One thing I did notice, I failed to do on page five of the resolution, condition number 10 should be struck. I should have removed that. That was, that was my condition, to try to get to, get additional plantings prior to the last meeting, but since additional plantings are being provided, most likely that condition will, will be struck. Again, depends upon what the commission's determination with this new landscape plan is. And, so with that, and with the, the additional work that the applicant has done, staff feels that they've done an adequate job of, of responding to the commission, responding to the neighbors. Certainly not everything has been added that the neighbors wanted, but I think there has been some compromise reached, and with that, staff continues to recommend approval of this design review application and the variance application and the revised landscape plan. That concludes my report. Answer any questions for you, and of course, as I said, the applicant's architect and the applicant's landscape architect are here.
Thank you, Mr. Boyle. I'm going to ask the other commissioners if there are any immediate questions for Mr. Boyle at this time. Phyllis?
None.
Mr. Bundy?
None.
Okay. Dan?
No, sir.
Okay.
No.
Nicolo? No. Phil, I just want to ask you briefly about your fire department conversations, and was that in affirmation of their letter or their notations about this, or just to look for other concerns, or what was the substance of that discussion with the fire department?
My discussion with, with Pete Davis, the fire department, who graciously agreed to be here this evening, was to review this plan right here. Actually, I think it was the one without the red circles, but the, the latest planting plan, and sat down with him and asked him, you know, does this meet his qualifications, the listing of the plantings which are on the plan, and, and he agreed that this, that this is a plan that meets the requirements of the fire department.
Great. And we may have asked this question before, but in this town easement along Chapman, there are no utilities, are there, that would be covered by this planting, are there, along that side? Is there any reason for access other than its town property?
I'm not aware of any, I'm not aware of any utilities. You're saying between the edge of payment of Chapman and the, the property line?
Yes.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not aware of any, and speaking with public works, I never asked that specific question, but we talked quite in detail of, you know, what he wants to see, and he never mentioned any utilities underneath there. My, my guess is utilities are under the middle of the street.
All right. Yes?
I was there today to look at things, and PG&E indeed is digging up the middle of the street for what I assume is a gas line there, and the overhead utilities are sort of on the north side of the street.
Okay. Yeah, I know, definitely PG&E's, and, and the town is doing a fair amount of work on Chapman, various parts of Chapman.
Yeah. All right. After that short, you know, did anyone else have any other questions for Phil?
No, thank you.
Okay. So then, we will proceed with a presentation from the applicant. Who is here tonight to speak for the applicant? All right.
Hello, Joe Farrell.
No.
On now, there we go. Hi, Joe Farrell, architect for the applicant, and thank you for having us again tonight. In the past, in the days between our last meeting, we've done our, our, our best to try and do outreach to the, to the neighborhood and create a landscape plan that mitigates most of their concerns. On May 14th, we met with them Saturday, it was a Saturday, went through the, the, we kind of reviewed the project and talked about the removal of eucalyptus tree, and Pete Davis was kind enough to come as well and explain to the neighborhood how dangerous the trees are and how, why they are requiring that they be removed as well. Went through the landscape plan and came kind of quickly to the conclusion that the best approach to mitigate the, the, the issue with the new, new structure there and the removal of the trees was to, to landscape the perimeter, the edge of the property, obviously, you can see through the, the landscape plan, so that, I'll let Brad Ixtia go through that specifically, but we did, you know, we've, since then, we've been really trying our, our best to, to mitigate all the neighbors' concerns. The, a couple emails have come up at the, in the, kind of last few, today, one of them being kind of an issue with color. I have, I have a photo of several homes along Chapman that are very light in color, similar to what we're proposing. In fact, one of them, here in the top right, is almost identical, two-tone, you know, light colored with a gray, very similar to us, so I'll, I'll pass this along.
Thank you.
But, so, once again, we've tried, at this point, I'll let the landscape architect get up and, and kind of go through, through the, the modifications to the landscape plan. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Good evening, I'm Brad Ixtia, Imprints Landscape Architecture, and I met with the fire department and, and had quite a bit of dialogue with them, and then we had a meeting on May 14th to talk to the neighbors and hear their concerns and really review specifically site conditions, and from that meeting and the dialogue with the fire department, I created the updated landscape plan. Highlights of the plan include myraca screen hedge along Chapman Drive, and within this, four to six feet from the edge of the road, we're now planting 42 15-gallon myraca shrubs. I kept them off the edge of the road because there was a, a concern expressed by the fire department that we did not want to have hedges growing over the edge of the road or trees growing into the road to block fire truck access. Along with those myraca hedge, I then, behind those, I planted 24, or 15, 24-inch box arbutus trees and six, 36-inch box arbutus trees, and each one of those trees, or most of them on the uphill side, all have a rock planter to increase their height at planting, but also importantly, provide them a good soil and good drainage so that they'll thrive. And this, the soil conditions out there are not great, mostly due to the eucalyptus dropping leaves over the years, and, and it just is really bad for the soil conditions. In addition to that, we've added three 24-inch box coast live oaks, which are circled, if I can point there, these are with coast live oak, and we've added a magnolia tree right here, and then the 36-inch box arbutus are one, two, three, and one, two, three, and these were strategically located as larger specimens to provide instant screening and instant impact. I just want to correct, Phil had a great presentation, but we are now proposing 39 trees, not 29 trees, for the site.
All right. Is that the extent of what you'd like to say?
Yeah, I'm here to answer any questions and, and am available for any questions you might have.
With that said, I'm going to start with Nicolo and ask Nicolo if he would like any questions answered, would you?
No, I have a, just a, actually, yeah, I do, for the architect, just to clarify, on the drawings, it's only manor white, manor white, but on the, there is cotton, so just to clarify, that's the color.
Yeah, I think, Phil, do you have the other sample?
I'm just trying to look at that.
Drive, it sent a mismatched color on that, and I gave Phil a color copy of what the color is to be, and hopefully he can dig it up.
Okay.
And I apologize, I will, I will find it, I just misplaced it this morning. I don't know, Joe, if you want to, I don't know if you want to talk about, in general, the, the change and, and why you're proposing the change to color that may be helpful to the commission.
Well, the, it was, well, the intent was to always have cotton. Drive, it sent the wrong color. Here's a, here's a better representation of it.
I see.
I would say the renderings, the, the architectural renderings of the house, the 3D images, I think more closely capture the color of, of the structure than the actual color board, and that color, I think, is a better representation, so I...
Yeah, I saw the note, and I, I downloaded and printed the drive colors, and the cotton here is not that, that color, right?
They sent me the wrong sample. They labeled it cotton and mismatched it, sorry.
Okay. Nicolo, what else?
That's it. Thank you.
Dan?
Yes, thank you. So, last time we were here, we were talking about the tree plan screening, and I think there was a little bit of back and forth about types of materials, quantities of materials, and I think at one point, the landscape architect had openly asked whether there was maybe too many trees on the site, and as, you know, the site, over time, grew out, that maybe it wasn't appropriate. So, a lot of times, there's pressure, you know, to put more, and maybe bigger. So, I guess I would just ask maybe for a two-minute version of, you know, how did you approach this philosophically? You know, what did you think about, what's different here? And then there's, you mentioned 39 trees?
Yeah.
So, why do you think, in your opinion, that's the right amount? And, you know, from terms of scale, like, like, you know, just, just sort of describe it, and, you know, did you step back and evaluate it differently?
Sure.
And what are, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, planting is highly subjective, and different towns and different jurisdictions have different definitions for vegetation management. Let me just say that right off the bat, and, you know, I think this is maximum planting, you know, it's gonna, in, in five years, it's gonna take some pruning to keep it not getting over, overgrown. I think that it's reasonable. I have myraca and I have arbutus planted all around my house, and I planted it similarly, and I planted it about eight years ago, and I need to keep on it from now on. We planted it at my neighbor's house five years ago, and we're gonna have to keep at it in, you know, next year. We're gonna have to keep it to size, especially the myraca. The myraca, they grow, they get big. So, you know, I'm trying to make a lot of people happy, is part of this, too, and still maintain a level of professional, professionalism that I feel is sustainable and a long-term solution to this. So, you know, I'm balancing my professional, you know, liability, and I'm also balancing neighbors' need for, you know, screening and fire department needs for vegetation management. So, you know, there's a fine line within all that. All the plants, I was very selective with the plants, that they're not pyrophitic. We were requested specifically, do not put a fence around the property, so then I have to be deer-proof or deer-resistant. I also wanted to be drought tolerant. I want to be mostly California native. All the plants on the planting plan are in fire-safe Marin, non-pyrophitic. So, you know, you start to, the planting plan gets more narrow and narrow and narrow when you start to really define the characteristics of the plants that you're going to plant, and, you know, along, and then we have the two waterways within the site as well, so I can't plant within those waterways. And I had a question for neighbors one time, did they want to have privacy, or did they want me to recreate a forest? Because I was getting a little bit of mixed signals, and we don't necessarily want to recreate a, a shade forest out there, you know, it's a house, and houses need some sun, so, and they'd like to have some flatter spaces for their grandchildren to play. We don't want to just cover everything in trees and shrubs. That's, you know, it's not respectful use of the land, and it's not what the client wants, so I'm balancing that as well, client, you know, client desires. But, I feel like it's maximum planting at this stage.
So, here, here's an interesting question. So, do you feel that there was any, you know, I'll say undue influence from some particular group that modified your plan away from what you would ideally like it to be? Is it too dense? Is it not dense enough? I mean, I know that's a difficult question, and maybe this is the ideal plan, but if it were to be modified for some influence that you were concerned to make sure that you were approved, what would that be?
I think that this is a good plan. I think that it meets, I think it meets all these different requirements that everybody, you know, this has been a process, so, and, you know, again, some of this stuff is subjective, and I might get reprimanded in a different place that I'm overplanting by a different fire department, you know? So, this is always a balance, and, and it varies from place to place, but I think that this is a great plan. I think that it's a long-term plan that's going to be beautiful, you know? I think that it's going to grow up and it's going to feel like a natural setting, back to the natives, back to, you know, I didn't want a manicured landscape out here. I wanted it to feel like it was part of a natural hillside.
Okay. Thank you. And then one question, I don't know if we, we want to answer it now or at some point, is, you know, you've got this defensible circle around the space, excuse me, and certain areas were kept open because of the circle, but yet, you know, significant portions of it are, are, you know, fully planted. So, we asked a question about sort of what is defensible space, what are the rules, and I think that there was some open question about that, so I don't know if we further define that. And I'm not sure it makes a difference too much to the plan, but I'd be curious to see, you know, what are the rules for defensible space, and given that you're keeping certain areas open, how is it that you can materially cover the, the western side of the house, which is not a bad thing, I'm just more curious about it.
Some of it was that we just wanted to have some open for the sun. The defensible space, again, there's different rules within it, but you can plant within defensible space, you just cannot plant pyrophitic plants. You'd like to have spacing, you don't want to have fire ladders going up into canopies of trees. There's certain things that, you know, you don't want to do within defensible space. Some, again, some jurisdictions would say you can't plant hardly anything in defensible space. The Corredera Fire Department is more relaxed on some of the, which I think is good. You know, I think some of them are overbearing as well. So, again, it's subjective, and it's, it's how you interpret some of the California fire code. And Pete Davis is here, he might be willing to answer some of these questions and clarify it, because I think some of these questions came up at our last hearing, and it seemed like not very many people had really talked about this much. And I have talked about it a lot with different fire agencies, and nobody really, you know, had really straight answers at our last hearing, which led to some confusion on my part.
All right, Dan, there you go. All right, Mr. Bundy?
I had a question on the myraca and the plantings along the northern edge. As those are planted, how big will they be initially, because that's going to be your primary screening?
They're going to be initially at a 15-gallon plant, they're going to be anywhere between four to six feet, right off the, right at planting, and...
And that will be pretty much level with the road, or down?
It varies. It goes up and down. Some areas of that street are, they're steep areas, and then there's some areas that are more flat, and we're gonna, you know, we can do some manipulating of grades to build up the downhill side and to, you know, we'll do, we'll do our best to, to plant them so they'll thrive. They're not a real finicky plant, so they do well on slopes, they do well in poor soil, you know? But, I wanted to, I didn't want to put them too close to the edge of the road because they will impede the fire truck, and I can't do that.
The, I, I think that's going to do a lot to help from the standpoint of privacy going along there, and also the applicant, you know, won't see every car light that comes by there once those really get developed. The rock planters that are, that are going in, I was originally thinking that there needed to be some kind of retaining wall to do a higher planting. Could those be a little higher up on the slope? Would that get the trees sort of looking more mature, really have the foliage blocking some of the views of the house and the house some protection from the road?
I think that, you know, a lot of this is, we're going to lay some of this out in the field. We're gonna, again, I started on this plan by putting the myraca four to six feet from the edge of the road, due to the growing into the road. I got to give them space to grow. And then I fit the arbutus right behind them, so to create, the myraca creates a screen from the ground up to, I mean, immediately, five to, four to six feet, and then as they get older, myraca get large, so, and the arbutus will get, you know, 20 to, 20 to 25 feet. I brought pictures from my house, if you want to see what a myraca and an arbutus look like over a little bit of time. I took these this evening, and...
Yeah, I was just particularly interested in how they're going to look, sort of immediately, and then over the next few years, depending on what level those are planted at. The, the other thing, I feel like I have to stand up for eucalyptus trees a little bit. They've really gotten a very bad rap, and certainly, the grove untended as it stands now has been a fire hazard for many years, and fortunately, we don't, we haven't had any homeless encampments near there or below there. But, I think it's such a unique aspect of Chapman Park, and that by eliminating all the eucalyptus trees, it's really going to be a dramatic change for the neighbors, and I also think the, the applicant's house is, is going to look rather bare and exposed for a period of time, and I know you can get rid of eucalyptus trees without permits, and, you know, there's no requirement to keep anything, but this is one of the requests that the neighbors had. I would also think that it would be beneficial to the applicant to keep some of the second-growth eucalyptus that are healthy, that are... to keep some of the second-growth eucalyptus that are healthy, that are not leaning towards the house. They could be in the defensible space. But as long as, you know, they, they have cleared out underneath them and don't have any, you know, limbs at risk. All trees have a risk of falling. All trees have a risk of losing limbs. All trees have a risk of fire. But if it's maintained, I think that would be a much better look for the house initially. And then, as things grow up, if things mature as you expect them to do, you know, they could be removed at a later time, or if they become more of a hazard. That's just my personal thought on it.
We have kept some eucalyptus in the right-of-way area. We didn't take them all down. There's that area in the, in, along Chapman, that there's some eucalyptus that are remaining. There's one along the edge of the road right now that it dropped a giant limb. And everybody wants it out. And it's the biggest eucalyptus right there. And the limb is sitting right next to the tree. So, there's, you know, we've talked a lot about the eucalyptus, whether they should stay or go, or some should stay or some should go. And my client is, my client loved the eucalyptus trees going into this thing. She didn't wanna cut them down. She thought that was one of the most beautiful things about the site. So, but when we got into it, not only was there the fire aspect, there was the dropping of limbs. There was the insurance aspect of it, where the insurance, you know, my client became really afraid of these trees. And, you know, most times, eucalyptus are just considered a nuisance tree, a weed tree. They drop tons of leaf litter. And the leaf litter is highly flammable. There's nothing you can do. You can, you know, they're gonna drop leaves, and they're gonna drop branches. And we take them out all the time. You know, they should never have been planted in the first place. It was a big mistake to bring those trees over here from Australia, just like Scotch broom, just like all these other invasive plants that, that they wreak havoc on things. And they poison soil. There's nothing good about them, other than that they look nice.
Boy, we have a difference of opinion on eucalyptus trees, don't we?
All right, okay. Next question, Bob, for the architects already. Phyllis, your question, please.
I had a question about the house. But first, because of what Bob said, I think, as far as the eucalyptus trees goes, I will leave it to the experts and the client to figure out what is safest and best to live with. I think efforts have been made. The landscaping, our plan, has really progressed tremendously. It is giving privacy, I think, to the neighbors and to the applicant. And I'm really pleased to see that this has been done. I wanted to just question something, Joe Farrell, if I may. You passed this out after you had passed this out. I just wanna be sure I am, look at that. The upper right-hand corner, is this the one you said most closely represents what you're doing?
That, yeah, that has a very light, off-white body to it, as well as a gray to it. It's kind of a two-tone color scheme that is similar to what we're trying to rep...
This is painted wood, so, and then, your wood is that very, very dark brown that's...
Yes.
I guess the bottom of the board, from where I am, to the right of the wrong color.
Yeah.
Okay, so, this will be the two in the contrast.
And a large part of the body of the structure has a darker stucco, two-tone.
The, and that, that dark wood, stained wood, is a kind of a feature of the soffits going around the building, which you'll see a lot of from down below, as well as the, kind of, the front entry and the decks have skirting with that. Yeah, you can see it on the cover sheet of the...
We have so much paper on this, we could probably build a house. There we go. Okay, so, you're saying the very dark will be here?
Correct. Some of that, that porch roof structure has the dark stucco.
Up here.
Correct.
And this will be...
The dark stained wood.
The dark stained wood.
Yeah. So, we're trying to, we're trying to create a, kind of, a varied, different scheme of coloring. So, it's not all one different, one color scheme. And get some variation, articulation, and definition of the structure, just for visual interest. And I have to say, I mean, we're, we're doing our best to screen this building from the perimeter, so people don't see it. So, I think that kind of lends itself to allowing us to, I hope, to choose a color scheme my client really desires.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right. I don't really have much, because I think that you guys have covered this. The screening of the trees on the street is sort of the initial street screen that'll grow up quickly. And behind that, the canopy trees are off-the-road ways. And they grow up above that street screening. So, that's the secondary line. And it appears that you really got almost a tertiary planting in there. I don't know, who's got the flipper, go back to the site plan there? The landscape plan? There we go. So...
That one or the red circles?
This one, right here. So, it appears that in this plan, that there's a yuc here and a yuc here that you're keeping. Is that right?
Yeah, there's...
Two or three?
Let's see here. Looking, look close here. There's a group of elm trees that are along the upper part that initially weren't on the survey because they're too small. So, I marked all those. And then, there's a group of bay trees. And there's a large elm tree up in the corner. It's like an eighteen-inch elm. And then, the eucalyptus that we're keeping is... Let's see here.
It's about, there's one about here, it looks like, and then, one about here. So, all right, I think we've...
So, twenty-four-inch yuc, a sixteen-inch yuc. One of the eucalyptus that was out there is actually dead. Twenty-four-inch yuc, that was dead. And the forty-eight-inch yuc is the one, that's the largest one out there, is the tree that is deemed to be dangerous. And then, there's the forty-eight-inch large yuc that's in the middle of the road that we're obviously keeping.
Got it, all right. I think that we've gotten a good presentation from you. So, unless you have anything else you'd like to add, based on our comments or questions so far, before we open this up to public comment.
No, I'm, we did, we did plant some screen, an additional screen coming up Chapman Drive of a group of redwood trees to also, you know, when you come around the corner, the headlights would look right, you know, flare right into the house. So, we added a group of redwood trees along there as well.
Yeah, okay. Excuse me, before you go, I did realize, who conducted the meetings with the neighbors of you guys?
Both Joe and I were there, and the fire department's there. And I think there was about fifteen or so neighbors. There was a list of, everybody signed in. And then, Gladys's daughter was there as well.
Who's here tonight?
Great. Okay. Is there anyone else, then, that wants to speak for the applicant before we open it up for public comment?
Peter Davis, I'm the deputy fire chief for the fire department. I'm trying to maintain a low profile, hiding in the back of the room. But I thought I'm not gonna do this process. Any justice if I don't speak up? What I wanna do is pass out an article that I referred to, which is called "The Science Behind Eucalyptus Fire Hazards." It's by Carol Rice. And it's done in Angel Island in the Golden Gate National Recreation Area. And it talks about why we make decisions based on eucalyptus trees. And it's good reading, so I just want you to have this.
Good to have it, yes.
Thank you. I'll leave some in the back here if anyone else wants to read it.
Is there anything that you would want to clue us in as to the meetings or your input to the process during the meetings?
No, basically, we will, we will, as the process goes on, you know, enforce defensible space. Our relation with the neighbors and the architect and the design team here is to be a neutral party. I want everyone to be happy in this process. I don't wanna be a dictator and come in and start counting trees and say, you know what, we, we have a problem here, we have a problem here. That's not what this is about for the fire department. Any improvement in this area, I think, is gonna be beneficial for everyone. So, that's our stance on it.
And how do you feel about those trees that are in that so-called defensible space? How do you view planting in defensible space? And how do you define that defensible space?
Well, how we define it is, is the planting of the trees is spaced on how they grow. If you, if you put them too close together, they're gonna die. Our biggest thing is to protect the residents in defensible space, not have canopies close to the house, thirty-foot of clearance, not have branches hanging over fireplaces, things like that. That's the defensible space for us. Having an area doesn't, what the landscape architect talked about, laddering fuels that take an under-story brush, burn up, move up into trees. And as they ladder, they get up in the, in the tops of trees, which they call a crown fire, which, when that happens, you know, it jumps from tree to tree and causes a problem. Our biggest thing is making sure that when the planting gets done, there is space around the home. And that it is in the WUII code that the building materials that are used for the building protect that home even more, also, with the tempered windows, the fireproof siding, and a Class A roof. So, that's what we look for also.
Thank you. Does anyone else have any questions for the fire department?
I don't.
Mr. Bundy.
Peter, I wonder, in, in looking at defensible space on Christmas Tree Hill and up Chapman, has the fire department recommended individual homeowners install sprinkler system that would be specifically to wet down the vegetation in the event of a fire?
No, actually, what that does is that, that defeats things also. We wanna maintain a water supply if there is a fire on Christmas Tree Hill. And if people start tapping in all the water sources up there, that's gonna limit our ability to fight the fires. Our biggest asset we have right now is to just educate people. Every year, we drive up there, we issue notices to people. Cut your weeds, trim your trees, make your home safe. As you know, and as we briefly talked about, Bob is, you know, there's some characteristic fires that have happened very recently. Two of them last year, in, which I was at, is the Butte Fire and then, the Valley Fire, that uncharacteristically created a firestorm that they couldn't reproduce in computers. That these fires made their own weather and gobbled up everything in its path. You know, so, what we try and do is to let people know that, you know, your biggest thing is to keep yourself safe. Wetting down a vegetation, if one neighbor does it and two others don't, really isn't gonna have a lot of bearing on, on a rapidly moving fire with a topography slope and, and fuel behind it, it's not gonna do any good, so.
Thank you.
Thank you, all right. Okay, at this point, we've heard from the applicant about what they feel they've done to address the issues. And we've received a fair number of emails and comments in the last twenty-four hours from neighbors. So, I would like to hear what the public has to say about this project. So, please, step up to the microphone to make your statement. You each have three minutes to make a statement. So, please, start, line up, and get this process underway for, let's hearing what the neighbors have to say or the public.
Good evening, I'm Dan Phipps. I'm at 495 Chapman Drive. And I know it's, I get three minutes here. But I haven't seen the color sample that's now coming around and, and the photos. And I'd love to see those things. Because one of the earlier comments I had made last hearing was about the color being very white. And I was corrected, no, it's not a bright white. It's actually a very cream color. And I believe it's now a bright white again. So, I don't know what the other examples are up in Chapman. But it's, it's an anomaly to be a bright color. Right, it's his little deck here. And the house on the left is, you can, the garage, you can see, on the lower right-hand corner, you can see the garage of this. And this is the house. And you can barely see it, you can't see it from the street, actually. You have to go through the gate in order to get that photograph. So, there's one house, as far as I can see, that has some white on here. And it's recently done. And it's not an all-white house, it just has to be the deck. Anyway, I think they have made some progress on this project, and I appreciate what they've been doing. One of the concerns that we had asked for was the site section. We got it late last week. And the site section essentially, it's, we, all we've ever seen is the same project, proposed project that was done before. I saw a bunch of red circles. Maybe I'm misunderstanding it. I'm supposed to be an architect and read plans. But there's a red circle plan, if you wanna pull it up there on the screen for me, that'd be much appreciated, Phil, or whoever does the magic on the screen. There's some red circles all along the north side of Chapman. And I think all of these, all around here, are not new trees. Maybe you can correct me if I'm wrong, Brad, because I, I think they're just little planting circles that are enabling you to plant a tree straight up, as opposed to at an angle. It's not about lifting the tree, it's just about setting it there. And I, I sent an email and a photograph saying, these trees are all sort of twelve to fifteen feet away from the roadway. And as they go down the hill here, they're about ten feet down. And so, if I'm asking, can we move some of these things up and even meander some of the bushes in and around them, so you get some real, real screening along that side? And otherwise, I think other, everything is, I'm fine about that. I was the one who mentioned to Brad about the vehicle traffic. And I think he's done a great job putting some redwoods in here. I think that'll do something for that. And I think there's some nice screening happening in here from the west. I'm not, I'm not just concerned about me, I'm concerned about the whole neighborhood and having this screening. But again, I go back to the color. I don't, I don't see this as a bright house. This is going to be a bright house beacon on the hill. And I think it'd be nicer to have it subdued and more blending into the hillside. It was a treat environment. It was a dark environment when, when it was purchased. And now, it's supposed to be this light, fresh thing. And it is completely different than that. But it's not what the original intent was in purchasing, at least the story we've been told. And I appreciate having some movement on that north edge there, to have the trees that are gonna be more interspersed in there. And maybe it's something that can be done in the field. But it, right now, they're showing them very far down the hill, where it's not, not really doing something that I, in my, in my view. Because the site sections show it very clearly. And they don't have all the dimensions on here. And they don't consider, they don't include the house. There's a section that was created in the original drawings that we saw that went from the driveway through the house and down the hill, but never connected the dots to back down to the north side. And these don't connect the dots back up to the house. So, you have two puzzle parts that, in your imagination, you have to figure it out. And it's not quite clear. And I have actually figured it out on, on this one, this one section, on my drawing that I printed up. And I, I can't say that I'm right, because I just, it's what I've just been able to do. But if I take, maybe you can pull up the section up there. That'd be, that'd be easier for me to point out than this little thing. But if you take this line and go all the way up here, I have the house, you know, right about here, working its way up. So that when you take a sightline up, you're looking right into the living room, right into the deck and everything else, it's right there.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phipps.
We can't see it, and you can't see it, to make a decision. And I was hoping we would have more dialogue, just to get that closure on it, so that all the neighbors can feel comfortable. Because everybody's feeling they're getting bits of information, not the whole story.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you as well.
Peter, I ask the architect or the landscape architect a question for clarification.
Not yet, thanks.
After what he, if I don't wanna figure what he said, okay?
Not yet, yeah, thanks.
My name's Eliot Reston, I live at 200 Stetson. And I'd like to make two points. First of all, I also would like to thank the, the landscape architect and the applicant for, for the work they've done over the last week. We did meet on Saturday, May fourteenth. And the outcome of that meeting, the way I understood it, was that, based on the neighborhood's comments, that the landscape architect was gonna make his revisions and was gonna get back to the neighbors before they submitted to the planning commission. And in fact, on Thursday afternoon, we got a, a email from the applicant saying, on late Thursday afternoon, that Friday at nine o'clock, the landscape architect and Phil are available. Well, the reason we have these meetings at night, the same reason that people work during the day, everyone's gotta meet at night or on the weekends. And we asked that this meeting, first of all, be, be given proper notice, at least twenty-four hours, and be... be given proper notice, at least 24 hours, and be met at night or on the weekend, like we met on Saturday morning. Instead, the applicant decided to submit, and we never got a chance to review this before it came in front of you. To me, this is bad faith on the applicant's part. We really weren't given the opportunity, and it kind of negated the goodwill from the Saturday morning meeting and the progress we made. So I think the process, again, was really fell short. And the second point I'd like to make is that one of the things that Brad talked about, the landscape architect, in the first meeting and also on Saturday, is having retaining walls to, along the north edge of Chapman, or some kind of retaining structure, to bring these trees up so that they have some effect, just like Dan Phipps said. If you bring it 10 feet down, and you've got an 8 to 10-foot tree to start with, you're talking about, you're going to see 2 feet. And also, because they don't show where the house is, as Dan points out, which is much higher, if you take that thing out, you have to actually have about a 16-foot shade in order to have privacy for the client, for the applicant. And the applicant's going to be the most affected by not having privacy, more than the neighbors. And I don't think that this plan achieves that. And somehow, these retaining walls got completely eliminated, the thought of them or the idea between Saturday and today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Hi, I'm Aleen Phipps, and I live at 495 Chapman Drive. I just want to make a comment on the process. I know it's been described as smoothly and inclusive. However, I disagree with that. Just for example, not soon after the last meeting here, the owner fired all of her staff and sent us an email saying that she would cut all the eucalyptus trees down and leave the stumps. And then, the next day, she tried to schedule a meeting with less than 24-hour notice. I just, I just have a little trouble hearing that the process went smoothly. I just want to be honest about that. I mean, we're all grownups, and we can get beyond all of that, and we can live together, and it'll all be fine. I know that. I just will hope that the planning commission would please make sure to pay attention to the placement of the trees, and note that, as both parties ahead of me said, that, you know, you place a 15-foot tree down the hill, 10 feet, you've got 5-foot of tree. And a house towering up above it, it's really not going to make a difference. Also, the area, you take out all the eucalyptus trees, which I'm totally fine with. However, it's very windy up there, and there's no shelter then created. Hopefully, there will be through this process, but it's very windy, and there's lots of cars, streetlights, to be thought about, and I don't think the client has really lived there and sort of knows the site well enough, and is making these decisions based on lack of information. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Tim Porter, 544 Chapman, just up the hill. Without being too repetitive, for me, this drawing, I drive this street every day, I run it quite a bit, I own the land next to this property. That, the grade that it shows there, there are spots on the north side of that property where the incline is probably 60, 70 degrees. So any tree that's going in there, if you step off that road, you're, especially on the lower corner of that land, it drops down pretty quickly. And the house is above it, probably 15 to 20 feet on a grade, because it moves up toward, the road moves up Chapman toward my house. So that's just worth mentioning, you really can't tell from here. But I wanted to make one comment, that's sort of a general comment about, I went to the May 14 meeting, and there was a lot of talk by the applicant and others about the fear of living in the trees. And just in general, setting aside eucalyptus, which I think most of us probably agree, or probably need to go, or most of them need to go, but when you buy a house in the middle of the trees, you're buying a house in the middle of the trees. My house is in the middle of the trees. I lived in Mill Valley, I had a house in the middle of the trees. We managed the trees. We prune the trees, we, we cut down what we needed to cut down, we managed the rest for all those years. So I, I understand the fear of living underneath a eucalyptus tree, but when you look at the overall landscape plan, these guys really have worked hard on it, and put up, I think, with a lot of give and take from people who don't know their business as well as they do. But there's an awful lot of trees coming down on the bottom of the property that are not going to fall on the house, that are not going to drop a limb on the house. And when you look, walk up this road, if you were that person walking up that road and looked to your left, you would see a whole bunch of trees that sit below the house. So I just don't understand why those trees are coming down. Maybe they're a little old, maybe then it could be pruned, maybe there's some damage, but every, you could apply that to every pine tree on Chapman Road all the way to the top. All those trees are 50, 75 years old. So if those trees are dangerous, they're all dangerous. My, I guess my basic point is, when you buy an empty lot, or you buy a house in the middle of the trees, you're buying, that's what you're buying into. If you want a big, flat, empty space around your house, you should buy a lot in the bottle. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Who else is going to step up to the microphone, please? Step up immediately. Thank you. Three minutes.
I'm Linda Haley. I live at 200 Stetson Avenue, and I'm just going to address the issue of the color of the house. That site is quite unique in the fact that Chapman Drive wraps almost completely around it, so you see it from virtually every angle. Particularly for a lot of people, you see the north elevation, which is the largest. It's 30 feet high, 70 feet wide. I understand that there's contrasting materials, you know, the cotton color and the darker wood color. However, I find, as I walk through the neighborhood where I've lived for 30 years, that the majority of the houses are subtle earth tones, subtle greens, grays, browns. Recent house, which maybe the architect took pictures, one that was renovated just recently, and it has a lot of white, it's quite glaring. So many of the neighbors, and I'll say there are about 26 of them, would like to see some other consideration for a different color that doesn't reflect so much light, and have so much contrast with the darker shades. And I have two more things. One is concerned about the process of the tree removal, when and if this happens. It's a huge operation. It'll be a living hell for the people that live up there. The other thing is, I'd like to see a very definitive plan of construction, critical path method, so that everybody is on the same page and understands what's going on and who to go to if they have problems. So I'd like to see that addressed too, if and when this thing goes ahead. Thank you.
Thank you very much. All right. Please, are you going to speak? Please step up. Thank you.
I'm Susan Becker, and I live at 461 Chapman, so I live right across from the proposed home. And I just want to say that I support what has already been said, concerns about the color of the house. If you walk through the neighborhood, you'll see a lot of the homes, most of the homes blend in more with the setting. They're not white, they don't reflect that much light. They're grays, they're greens, as was mentioned before, and I think that's really important, that the home is harmonious with the environment where it's being built. Also, I agree with what was said before about trying to get the trees up a little further, higher, so that there's more screening. I appreciate what the landscape architect has added to the plan, the redwood trees and more screening, but I think the placement of them is still really important. And if some of the other trees, maybe not the eucalyptus, but some of the other mature trees can be saved if they were just maintained better, I think that would be desirable, instead of taking them all out. Of course, I understand they want to create some space around the house, but there are trees around the edge that seem like they would provide more screening that if they were maintained, and they're still healthy. I have a lot of trees on my property, and there are some very large trees, and you do, you just have to maintain them. And that large eucalyptus that's in the middle of the road, I mean, that one, that tree is a danger to everybody, but it's, it's there, and we all live with that. So, yeah, I also feel that some of the neighbors were not kept in the loop like I think they should have been. I wouldn't have been kept in the loop if it hadn't been for Dan and Linda and Elio. Somehow, I wasn't on the mailing list and never received the first postcard, and I'm certainly a close neighbor. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Who else do we have? No one to speak else about the project. Okay. So at this point, the neighbors have posed a number of questions about the project, and Phyllis has some questions for the architect. I think it would be appropriate to have the architect respond to some of them.
I'm not sure which of the two. When Dan Phipps spoke, he talked about...
Just a moment, just a moment, Phyllis.
It's certainly within the planning commission's purview to have the applicant team come back up and answer any questions and address any of the issues raised by the public comments.
Yes, thank you. So with that said, yes, we do have some, and please clarify for the public comment, your question.
My question is in regards to a comment made by Dan Phipps about moving the trees up closer. Could we have the image with all the red circles? Okay. He specifically noted the circles along that edge, right. And he wanted them moved closer to the road. Now, I thought during the presentation, I think it was your presentation, that you said that that is town-owned property, or the town had access. Would somebody please clarify whether or not the applicant could actually plant that area, and what would be the repercussions of doing or not doing it?
Yeah, I believe...
Yes, I can, I can clarify. So the, according to our Public Works Department, the right-of-way of Chapman Drive is edge of pavement to edge of pavement. The, from the edge of pavement to the property line, which is right there, so the, the area between the property line and the edge of pavement is owned by the town of Corder Madera, and it is the responsibility of 516 Chapman to take care of it. Very similar to down here in the flats, if you have a landscape strip between your sidewalk and your curb, you don't own that, but you get to take care of it. You also don't own the sidewalk, but in most cases, you get to take care of it. So that is, and that is common throughout most towns, I believe in California. So the Public Works Department is very interested in what is planted close to Chapman Drive, because they don't want it to damage their road. So it'll be a, it would be a, you know, a negotiation, a discussion between the Public Works Department and the applicant of what is planted there.
But would it be appropriate to plant tall trees in that area? That's what I'm asked about, because of the root systems and everything else involved. That it seemed to me from the discussion, that planting the trees along the property line itself was the way to go.
Right.
So that's what I would like clarified.
All right. So there were some answers to that, but I'm going to let the landscape architect answer that specifically about what the fire department said and Public Works said about having trees close to the road, and if you would reiterate how planting along the road provides a low screen, and the trees back from the road provide the high screen.
So again, the myraca was planted 4 to 6 feet from the edge of the road. So that's as close as I feel. I should put myraca where it's not going to grow into the road and impede any vehicular access, but the fire department was adamant that I do not encroach on the fire department edge of road. Then behind that, I have the arbutus that will get taller than the myraca. So I have the 5 to 6-foot screen right off the bat with the myr, or with the arbutus behind it, and, you know, they might be similar size, but the arbutus will overtake the myraca over time. And this area that is referred to, that the trees get moved down the edge of the road, the reason I moved them down the edge of the road is because there's a lot of existing trees right in that space that are on the edge of the road that I want to keep. There's bay trees, there's elm trees, and I'm respecting that there's existing trees there already. So I can't put new trees right planted in the root zone of existing trees. I have to respect that. And there is going to be a little bit of play with this. We're going to put, get the trees delivered, we're going to be out on site. We can move them up and down the hill. We need to avoid roots of trees. I mean, we might hit rock outcroppings, there might be all kinds of things that we have to make some adjustments. But my plan was meant to have a loose feel to it. It's not a row of trees, it's a zigzag of trees. It's a zigzag of shrubs. It's, the whole goal is back to this, I'm trying to make this feel natural and native and fit the character of Chapman Drive. So if you go out there and you see, yeah, those trees are off the edge of the road, but that's mostly because there's a whole group of existing trees in that space. There's 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7. There's eight existing trees on that corner that I'm maintaining.
Another question. Tim Porter asked, why are the trees below the house coming down, was the way he put it.
Well, this is back to the, the safety and the fear factor of the eucalyptus dropping limbs. They're our grandchildren. This was the main thing. They're our grandchildren. The little grandchildren girl was at our meeting that day. They're going to be playing in the yard. Just because a tree's 40 feet from the house, the kids can still go under there. And if they're under there, like someone said, that's a windy day, and a limb falls and, you know, heaven forbid that it falls on a child, who's going to be responsible for that? And Gladys does not want to be responsible for it. She won't do it.
No, I understand. I don't know how many people in this room remember when a eucalyptus tree fell out in Sleepy Hollow along the main street, and a woman was killed. So...
They're dangerous trees. There's no getting around it.
And I don't want to see them. I don't have to.
Anything else relative to the...
The process about the tree removal, is that something that's up to the town to take care of and make the rules, and that...
It is, in fact.
...the applicant?
It is. In the conditions of approval that are stated, that there will be a CPM brought to the town for the plan, and the parking, and the construction management, all of that has to be a part of what they submit. And the tree management removal, the construction plan, the parking, all of that, that is in those comments, has to be submitted to the town.
Okay, that's my question for now.
Yes, indeed. So, Mr. Bunnery, do you have any questions out of the public comments that you would like these guys to address?
Yeah, following up on what Phyllis was saying, that Don Porter talked about, and I noted too, that, you know, all of the trees were taken out below, and including, I think, one very large pine tree. And I, you know, feel that that was far enough down the hill, and it was big enough that it would still lend some grandeur, I guess, to the property. The, I had the same concern, but I think you're trying to address it by adjusting the armbus and moving those up the hill when it's, when you can with the other trees that are there.
We have the same goal. We would like to have privacy, and we would like to have instant impact. We have the exact same goal. We don't want to push these down the hill and have them be useless, you know? We have the exact same goal. We want privacy, we want softening, we want, we want a sustainable, fire-safe landscape.
And I think the color struck me a little bit as, not stark, but for, of course, what now looks like a woodsy setting, it won't, won't be quite the same without the trees there. And I'd probably like to see a craftsman-style home with brown shingles, but I understand the preference, preference for the applicant for the house of her choosing and color.
That's not a question, so, anyway, that...
Well, if there was a thought on the applicant's mind, that maybe there was another color, and she was thinking about something more earth toned would be appropriate, I think.
I mean, she, she really likes the, the color scheme she has. She sees it in the neighborhood, that there are some lighter-colored homes, so she would like, she would really like to stick with that if this, if, if approvable. For you, please consider it.
Okay, all right. Mr. Dan, questions for these gentlemen relative to the public comments?
No questions.
All right. Nicolau?
Yes, two questions. One is for you, Brad, which have, you know, you accomplished quite a bit. I mean, you can see the lot of work you've done, and I've known you so much, that I know your professionalism. Do you think... Do you think that, following Dan's questions, do you think, is there anything that can be done after what you've heard to increase somehow the heights of the screening?
We've already proposed six 36-inch box trees at significant expense to the client. You know, 36-inch box gets close to, where you need to crane them into place. They're very heavy. We've also put these rock planters in, two, they're going to be two feet tall, maybe even three feet tall, to increase the height and, again, provide great drainage and great soil. That will increase the, that'll increase the growth rate of the trees. We may be able to come up with some kind of a planting scheme that happens while the house is under construction, you know, to get the plants growing, to start sourcing these plants now and get them growing and, you know. There's, there may be some things along that ways. I don't feel like I should plant any more plant material. I don't think I should make it any more dense.
And not any further close to the, to the road?
No, I should not go any closer to the road. I already feel like I'm pushing it. I'm pushing it right now. I brought pictures of myraca and arbutus, if anybody wants to see them, taken from my house, four feet from the road, the height of the trees at a few years.
Look at them, yes.
Anybody want to see them? I worked, I scrambled to take these pictures this evening, so.
There you go then.
All right, and then it can be set out for the public to review as well, so.
Yeah.
Nicolo, do you have another question for him?
Yes, I'd like to ask you. I mean, you already answered that, but the white color, okay. I can see the potential for discussing some alternatives just because, you know, it looks like little by little, maybe there is some. Is there any way that the applicant can provide maybe an alternative that would, maybe wouldn't be perfect what she wants, but maybe just a step forward to diminish the brightness?
What I might suggest that, that the, as maybe a condition, that the applicant work with the planning staff on, on maybe a color, reviewing another color. I don't really want to propose another color right now since she's not here and we don't, we're not prepared to do that. But if, you know, potentially we could, we could make it a condition to work with, with the planning staff on a color. I think that would be acceptable to my client. Couple other things.
Great, thank you.
Okay. I just, I just wanted to clarify a few things if possible that the applicant has done some outreach. We mailed, mailed February 11th a flyer to all the neighbors. I don't know, some said they didn't get it, but she did mail it out. We tried to start a dialogue and her, her reaction of the email of cutting down all the trees was someone who's not familiar with Marin County and the public review process and just frustration, you know. It was not meant. We've been holding their hand to get her through this process.
Okay. We do know about all of that. That is a documented history. And it's, it's clear that we can discuss the public process a little bit up here. But anybody else have any other questions relative to what the public has brought up? Well, I have just one comment. There was the question about a retaining wall. I know the expenses of retaining walls. Was that something that was somehow inferred that would be brought to bear along that Chapman side there?
Well, if you look at some of the site sections, we were proposing that some of the, the trees get planter wa-, kind of walls.
Right.
We want it to look natural. We don't want it to look like a road project. And a linear wall, I think, would be very expensive. It would look very unnatural. Some of the findings that you have to make is that the site has, looks natural. And I think Brad has done an excellent job of meandering trees, intermixing hedges. And I think if we did a linear retaining wall, I think basically really what that's doing is just trying to accelerate, accelerate the screening. We do realize taking down these trees is going to create a void of, on that hillside for a while, but it's somewhat the process of doing a new home and doing it responsibly. The trees will come back and, but we just, to a certain extent, we have to be patient too. And we are increasing size of trees and so forth. But yes, it was considered, but we really, with these- kind of plantar walls, I know they're not doing, sticking them way up, but that would look very unnatural to do that.
Right, all right. There was one comment about the fact that there was a site section through the property and we don't have one now that puts the house relative to this side of the street. So there is no total section from Chapman to Chapman, so to speak, that you've done after the increased landscape plan.
And I apologize, the, we were thinking that the layer of vegetation on the site is like a detail section, kind of with showing a human scale to it was, was going to be an effective graphic exhibit. One thing I do have to say is Chapman is, the lower floor of this residence is below Chapman. If, if, right where you come around the corner where 504 is, it's, the lower floor is roughly about at that elevation. But as you climb up to Stetson, the home, you're coming up quite a bit and the lower floor is actually kind of down in a hole. It's a, it's a little bit of a valley. And I think to that extent, it really, at that corner of Stetson, it's really going to be perceived as a two-story home because everything falls down and there's going to be a six-foot hedge. So I really think some of those exhibits that we put together of the 3D visualization of what the hedges are like over time and we superimpose the, the home in it, I think those are effective tools for you to see what's going to happen at those timeframes.
All right. Thank you. We have nothing else for you at this time. So I would take this back up to the commission here to talk about this up here. Do we need to have a further open of the public comment at this time? I don't believe so.
No, just make sure you close public comment.
Yes. So with that said, I'm closing the public comment section. We are taking it back up here to the commission to start with a discussion of the merits of what we've seen put before us tonight. So I'm going to start with Nicolo over here and I would just like your thoughts about the change in landscape plan and is it effective, is it not? And is there something else that you want to add to the project as a condition?
Sure. Just to clarify, are we, is the whole project now being-
The whole project is still before us.
Okay. So I think that we made progress from the last time. I, in my opinion, the project is approvable with some conditions and some maybe revisions and needs to be pondered. I still concur with my last statement or last time that the overall, I mean, I mean, there were some, some discussions, comments made that the project does not respect scale, massing, or character. And although it's considerable square footage, the building design, in my opinion, seems broken up enough to be in blocks, which diminishes the overall mass, as far as I'm concerned, and the scale is in within its legal entitlement. And it seems overall a simple design. It doesn't make a huge statement. The colors, maybe I can see that, the bright color. So that, the color, the white color, I would like to see if there's a possibility or an effort to, to propose an alternative. I don't know which, how to do that, meaning to be kind of-
We will take that up as a potential condition then.
Yeah. And as far as the landscape, I don't know enough about landscape, but I know that Brad has worked incredibly. I mean, this is a huge effort. The changes are evident. He said, he's, he's saying that nothing can be done further in his opinion. So I would like to see though, it would be fair to see a section that shows what the building realistically is going to be versus the new planting and trees. So that would be something that may be perhaps a last piece of the-
So bear in mind that if you, if you, if we're going to put that on a condition, then that's something that either we have to review or-
Right, I understand.
So that would delay it, so.
I, I, I understand and I don't want to delay. I just, I just think that we should see it somehow. Maybe staff, well, we don't know it. We haven't seen it. So I would like to ask all of you what you think about this specific item.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Are you, have you got anything else you want to state?
No, no, thank you.
Dan, on to you.
Thank you. I guess I'd summarize it to say that I generally concur with staff's recommendation and I think I can make the findings as outlined by staff. Landscape plan's been iterated and I think it's fine. And I actually think they're spending a fair amount of money on the plan and there's significantly more plantings than one would typically expect. So from a quantity standpoint, the cost is pretty high. So I would give them compliments for that. Second, as it relates to color, you know, that's a subjective thing. And, you know, I feel sometimes unless it's completely offensive, where we can't pick the color of our own house, then we're, we've got bigger problems. So I don't have any issue with the color of the house. So a few other things that are subjective, but they don't change my opinion as it relates to the findings or the recommendations of staff.
Thank you very much. Phyllis, over to you for your thoughts.
I pretty much agree with Dan's comments. I think the recommendations in the staff report are fine. I can make the findings. Since the architect was agreeable to having his client meet with staff to take a look at the color, I would like to pursue that since the architect himself brought it up. And I would feel comfortable with the conclusion that the staff comes to after meeting with the applicant and architect or however they wish to do it.
Well, we have to decide how we would proceed with that specific review.
Well, I'm just saying, you asked for my opinion. I mean, as far as the landscaping goes, I think considerable improvement has been made. It's very obvious the effort that was put into please the neighbors' concerns, to react to the neighbors' concerns. And obviously what will be seen the day it is put in and what is going to be seen four or five years later will be a lot different. But we all have to wait for the time to pass.
Right.
And that pretty much sums it up.
Okay, thank you.
I think, I think Brad did a good job of responding to the neighbors' concerns as well as the issues that we brought up in regard to the screening, privacy for the applicant, as well as some screening for the residents and people on the road, either riding their bikes or walking. I just hope that, you know, it, it looks good over, in a shorter period of time than a longer period of time. And I assume that you will try to move the artemis around as much as possible because that's in the applicant's best interest also to create that sense of screening. I would agree with Phyllis that it would be nice to have the applicant meet with staff to review the color. But I also agree with Dan that, you know, this can be, unless something is glaringly, you know, out of sorts, it's not something that we can necessarily request a change of. But I like the idea of having it considered.
Okay, all right. I'm going to respond to a few things that are brought up by the neighbors and that have been consistent issues. And I think for the record, we need to point out a couple of things. Phil, could you take it back to the new slide of landscaping there? That's good enough. So the question was asked about what happens at the bottom of the property down here. And I think that we've heard from a number of people regarding the project adjacent as well as this project about what's down there and what's viable. And what I see in this plan is that they're actually filling in this with the oaks and some planting. So it will become, in a sense, forested over time here with the significant oaks going in. I think that's a fact, that they've replanted the lower part of the property here. I think that the watershed discussion that we heard at the last meeting about this and how the eucalyptus affect the watershed and it's a continuous impact downstream, so to speak, as well as the wildlife and the soil and everything else growing there, is very valid. And thusly, I still stand for the removal of the eucalyptus as, as extensively as possible. Even keeping these two or three is clearly a concession that they have made to the neighbors. Having lived with eucalyptus and suffered damage and spent in excess of $20,000 on my own property in previous years, I know what they will do to homes and what it costs for a crane to remove one eucalyptus is extraordinary. So I know what that is to live with and I know what the impact would be. And Gladys had said that she was disappointed to find what she found out about the property. Hence, I think that they've gone forth and planted this as intensively as is possible. And I have a fair awareness of what is possible in density and I think that the layering of this roadside is quite effective. So there's immediate blockage as well as a two- to five- to 10-year significant screening of the house. So I think the house will be screened and the slides of potential growth demonstrate that. So I think that the neighbors' concerns have been heard and that in a few years, they won't see this house, period. It won't even be visible. It's, it's going to be screened. And yet, the neighbors, up above, there's some homes, there's a couple of homes up high. You can't do anything about it. And you can see those homes in clarity from the road and they're quite visible. And sometimes you can see into other people's living rooms on that street. And there are other homes on that street that are completely screened. This home will achieve the pretty complete screening. There's, I forget who decided that there would not be fences. That was the consensus of the neighbors and the client. But a lot of homes on Chapman and Stetson also have fences. They don't have wildlife running through their property and yet this is going to be open to anything coming through here. So there was early on discussion that somehow this haven for wildlife was being removed. Well, I think they're recreating one. But I also think that it's a property owner's right to create what they want to create for this kind of property. Granted that there's been some friction with the neighbors and that they have wanted to get some concessions beyond what the architect has offered. But I think that the architect and landscape architect have done quite a bit to screen further. And they've listened, they've heard. I think that in all fairness, designed by committee is a hard thing to do. But we live and we're trying to live together. And there are projects that we look at that are far more intrusive than this. And these people have created a very responsible aesthetic design and there's a lot of dollars going to the improvement of this property. It will raise the value of this neighborhood significantly to have this reforested, replanted, and redone. So yes, the process that we've asked for with neighbors is to have an applicant reach out to the neighbors. I think that the town is working on trying to create a process that allows neighbors to give input. The noticing is completely legal and done the way it's written into the municipal code and the zoning code. Beyond that, you know, being aware of what's happening in your neighborhood is somewhat a citizen's responsibility. But then the applicant is responsible to make sure that the neighbors know. So it's a two-handed problem. The applicant and the neighbors each bear some responsibility here for reaching out. And we would like to have that more consistent. And we would like to have that more consistent. But reaching out does not mean that there's consensus. Reaching out means that you've heard the issues and you've listened. And I, I think that I've heard here that the landscape architect and the architect have listened to a number of the issues. But they're just not going to make all the neighbors happy. But I think they've done a pretty good job. So, in some nation, I, I think that if we were to try and ask for a condition of approval with the color to be submitted to the staff, then, then it opens it up to a design by committee again with the neighbors to some extent. Or, you know, you guys would then be in the position of deciding if the color is offensive or not offensive or appropriate. So, I, that's a difficult place for you to be in because either you're reaching out to the neighbors again and holding a meeting of neighbors to review a color, or it's back before the commission as a color.
And my recommendation would be that the commission directs staff, if, if you want to impose that condition or something like it, direct staff to, to review the color proposed by the applicant and give direction that that color shall be darker than was proposed, that color shall be, you know, an earth tone. So, so both staff and the applicant have a direction of where that color should go. And that it not involve the neighbors, but it just be between the applicant and staff.
With the commission, which is what I was trying to do.
If that's the commission's wishes, of course.
Yes, right.
That's one option.
I have a question, if I can.
So, yes, go ahead, Nicola, please.
Sure. The color wouldn't hold up the project. And my initial thought was to see, first of all, if the applicant would spontaneously maybe offer a different color. You know, and lastly, maybe that could be a quick, another option would be if that could be a quick approval, submission. Just so we don't hold up the project.
Well, they did not. So, Phyllis.
I may not have been as clear as I should have been when I brought this up. But I think what Phil just said was the essence of what I was trying to say. I think there has been enough input from the commission, from the neighbors. As far as the color goes, we've had a discussion tonight. It's, you know, it came up, I think, at the last meeting when we saw the color board and stuff. And at this point, I would like to have our professional staff take a look and work with the applicant and her architect to see what will be best. And I would rely upon their decision. And I want to see us go ahead with the resolution without it being held up.
So how would you define the direction for color? If you were to, if you were to look at a drive-up color sheet or something and say, where does that go? Is it a grayer color? Is it a browner color? Is it slightly darker? Is it significantly darker? Is it brown tone, earth tone? How would you describe that?
You're asking me?
Yes, I am asking.
I am turning to Phil and Adam to make that decision. That's the whole point. My subjective opinion is not the one that should count. It's the applicant's house. And since the architect made the offer, I am willing to have staff take them up to sit down and look at this with the applicant and her architect. And for us to stay out of it and for the neighbors to stay out of it. While you're studying color over.
So, Mr. Bundy, I'm going to ask you about the color issue and if you would feel so adequately prepared to provide a color direction.
My direction would be, it's the, I think, preference of some of the commissioners and many of the neighbors to make it less white. However, if she has her heart set on it and won't budge, you know, I wouldn't push to make that a requirement. But I would just like to have that discussion between, you know, planning, the architect, and the applicant.
Exactly.
All right, so I'm going to turn to my left. I'm going to ask each of you guys this question. And then, I'm going to ask for a motion. And we're either going to leave it off, the motion, and let that play out as it may. Or we're going to put it into the motion. So, Dan.
Personally, I would move to approve the color scheme as it is, which was what is proposed in the application. And I would disagree a little bit with Phyllis to say that it is the purview and responsibility of this commission to rule on that color, given its part and parcel to the entire application. So I think it's a subjective thing. And I would not want to push it off to staff, not that they're not qualified. But I think that would probably upend the process.
Right.
Because I think it's, it's our responsibility to rule on it. If we want a different color, let's pick a different color. Or ask the applicant to come back. But the application that's in front of us is for a particular color, and I would move to approve it.
All right. That said, Nicola.
I'd like to see a mitigation on this. So I agree with Bob 100%. I'd like to, you know, approve the project and leave the color maybe to the applicant to reapply with another color.
That's a significant statement, to reapply with another color. I don't think Mr. Bundy was saying that. He was, he, he's saying work through staff to do a darker color.
Right. I, I think it would be very difficult for staff and it's not fair.
Okay.
So that's why, I, I, you know, should be on us.
All right. So from my viewpoint, I'm going to say that I think the color should be approved as is at this point. And that the project, from my perspective, would not be conditioned. So I'm going to ask for a motion to move this forward with or without this color condition upon it. So.
Excuse me, we, we have to eliminate condition 10.
Yeah.
As a part of the resolution, that's correct.
If my fellow commissioners would be amenable, I would make such a motion. And I think you know the motion that I would make. So I would sort of ask for a soft look. Otherwise, I'll stand down.
Did you say that again? I got soft look and I'm probably.
I said, if I were to make a motion, I would make a motion to approve it as is or the color as is. But there seems to be a possible consensus here to the opposite. So I would defer if someone was strongly in favor of making their own motion.
All right, going once, twice. Is there going to be a motion with a color to darken the color? Yes or no?
I would move to approve the project as is, but ask the applicant, the architect, to meet with planning to discuss the concerns of the neighbors and some of the commissioners.
That's not going to get us.
We're guarding the color. That's fine.
Is that appropriate?
All right. So that, it's going to be, what I'm hearing, then, before somebody seconds this, is that it's going to be approved with condition 10 eliminated. And that the applicant will come to staff with a different shade of white. Or darker white, gray or white, something in that neighborhood.
We'll consider.
We'll consider.
So it's not a bit. We'll consider a darker color.
Okay. All right.
Second.
Can I ask a question before you do that?
Um, yeah.
I mean, if you ask staff to do it and they, they agree with the color, does that fit? It can be approved at staff level? I just want to confirm that.
Yeah, there's no mandate to actually make the change.
It's, yes, it sounds like it. It sounds like, and I, I don't think we're talking about going to a, I think we get the sense it's a slightly darker color that we're talking about. So with that, I would say yes.
Okay.
All right, we have a second. So with that said, please call the roll.
Okay. Commissioner McHaff.
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy.
Prove.
Commissioner Chase.
Aye.
Commissioner McHadd.
Aye.
Commissioner Calderon.
Aye.
All right. We will take a five-minute break for the room to clear.
Stretch.
So we're, we're back on, we're back in business. And we're going to go to our new hearing. So this new hearing tonight is for the Nugget Market at 5627 Paradise Drive. This is a design review application for exterior improvements. And Mr. Bush, this is your presentation to make.
Good evening. So, this is for Nugget Market at 5627 Paradise. Start with a vicinity map to get ourselves situated here. We're looking at Paradise, Paradise Drive here, 101. Now to a bit of a finer scale here. You have the Paradise, Paradise Shopping Center. These are three parcels that comprise Nugget Market. Adjacent business here is Paradise Cleaners, the gym, Aegis Senior Living. This, the, just a little bit of history here. The Paradise Shopping Center was refurbished around 2000, 2001, when Aegis was built. And what was then Paradise, Paradise Market, was refurbished. And they were, they were all part of the same application. So they were approved in, in 2000 and built shortly thereafter. We're going to be zooming into these plans because we're looking at such a large scale here. We'll skip ahead to the, to the existing conditions here. So first, first we'll go through what, what's there now. Some pictures taken today of the north elevation. And then get into what's, what's being proposed. So we're looking primarily here at the, at the north elevation, going from east, make our, make our way west. So currently, there is a loading, a loading area here where trucks back up, unload pallets. It's used to store and to load pallets currently. There's kind of a screening wall here. There's no roof over it. And there are some, there are some doors here currently. And moving, moving on over here, we have a cart corral where carts are kept here. There's an existing entrance. There's a room here that's currently used for, for, for public meetings and different things. The applicant can speak to some of these current, current uses here. This is a room for, for employees and for loss, loss prevention. Moving on, there is the second entrance here. There is a existing Wells Fargo ATM that's screened right here by a, by a wall. Excuse me. And moving on, so here's, here's the second entrance. There's existing tables and chairs here. There'd be a significant amount of focus here as we move on to the proposed, proposed site plan. As we see, there are, there are four or five tables and chairs which are out from under the overhang here, which is signified by this line right here. These were part of the original approval in 2000, 2001. There's also tables and chairs here. I think the intent at the time was for these to be kind of part of the whole, the whole center, to be kind of a focal point, an area for, for a community to, to come together and to kind of be a public, a public amenity. So currently, you have the tables and chairs that are out under the sun, under umbrellas. You have the tables here that are, that are along the wall. And the, the extent of the business is here, where the Paradise Cleaners continues. So here are some pictures taken today. It's fairly common to see that these, these areas here at lunchtime especially are, are full as we, as we see here. So here's the tables and chairs out here, along the wall here. It's a little difficult to see with lights. But the second entry, this is, this is looking toward the east. And in the background, we see Aegis. Another alternate view, looking from the side here as we make our way, make our way east. Here is the entrance with produce displays shown here. The ATM machine is located over here. Again, looking, looking back at that. Here is the first entrance, the furthest to the east, with the cart storage area and the planner, planner box. And there's also a bike rack over to the side here. Moving on, you can see the distance here from the, the storage and the loading area to Aegis and the, and the parking lot here for the, for the residents and the patrons of the store. And here's the, here's the doors. As you can see, there's currently no roof over that area. There were story poles that were, that were erected here to show the, show the proposed roof line. I'll get into that in just a, just a moment here. And here, doing my best to, to shade the sunlight. This is looking from as close as I could get to the, to the windows of the, of the Aegis to the, to the east there. Looking at the existing. As you can see, again, here's the screening wall for the storage area, existing trellis, these elements here. And moving on to the, to the proposed, let's see here. So, what they're, what they're proposing here are to add two doors here to screen off the storage area. They're proposing an extended roof line where there is currently no roof here to cover, to cover that area. Again, provide some visual screening, some weatherproofing, obviously, all the benefits that come along with enclosing what is an open area. Moving along here, this is currently open area where the carts are stored. And what we're seeing here are a couple of different sections that are being created by the installation of hanging barn doors. You have an area here with doors in between. Maybe it's better to use a laser pointer here. So, doors being proposed here. A wall is proposed here with a window. We'll show an elevation in just a minute here to show what that, what that looks like. There's some additional planting to kind of soften that wall there. Again, the barn door, hanging door element is extended here to allow some flexibility of that space, depending on, depending on the weather who may be using that space at the time. There's another seating area created here. There's no changes to the, to that room there. The landscaping is extended further along here. As you can see, the carts were previously here, as well as an entrance. The carts have moved and the entrance has moved as well. The cart storage area is here. There's a steel, it's probably better to go to the elevation just a moment here, but just to show the relocation. So this is where the carts are currently. And the door has been moved here where the ATM machine was previously. Whoops. Again, this is where we saw the produce currently being stored in the, in the photos from today. You have another cart storage area. And you have both entrances now in fairly close proximity, kind of centralizing the, the entry to the, to the store. You have the barn door element extended again here. The ATM has been relocated. There was, in the past, when the ATM originally went in, there was, there were some, some issues brought up just about visibility of, of the machine, the lighting at, at night casting a glow. And so there was, you know, sensitivity to siding this, to putting fixed doors here to cover that. So it would be less, less visible to neighbors across the street and, and otherwise. Again, there are table and chairs that are, that are currently in this, in this area. But the orientation and the location of these has changed. Whereas currently, there are some in the sun here with umbrellas and some along the wall. They've been kind of consolidated into this area here, again with the barn door element continuing. And now we'll, we'll go to elevations. So here, do our best to zoom into the appropriate areas. Again, moving from the east to the west. Here you can see that this storage area, there's the addition of these doors here, this wall element here, and the roof line staying low and extending from the current roof line down to the, the screening wall. So that, that contributes to floor area. 850 square feet of floor area being added in total, in part due to the, the coverage here. Here you can see, well, let me, let me back up real quick. This is the existing, clearly, and this is the proposed. And they've included this detail here to see from top down looking basically inside, inside the barn door kind of structure here, where the tables are located and how it creates that space there. You can see the landscaping feature has been added here. Really, the facade is, is changing pretty, pretty clearly. As we move, move along here, this is a new cart storage area. As we move, move along here, this is a new cart storage area. One detail that I had yet to mention is, is that this is, basically, there's some, some landscaping, some vines being used to soften the steel wall here, kind of a trellis. And that element of the landscaping extends to the, to the back wall as well. There's a, I believe, a glass overhang that covers that cart, that cart area that extends Again, you're, you know, we're showing the produce here. This isn't entirely accurate, as we saw from the photos today. There's produce stored there today and is proposed to be displayed there as part of the proposed project. So here's where the barn door element continues, covering this entrance. And again, there's a new entrance right here. There's the current entrance right here, and you have these doors that are flexible and hinged, and are intended to be operated by employees at the start of the day, closed up at the end of the day for, for security purposes, and to allow for adjusting for, for outdoor seating and, you know, inclement weather. And again, you have a cart corral right here as well. There's one last element. It's a little difficult to see, but we can zoom in here. So these are kind of a plantation window that we, that I'll show you in a section in, in just a moment here, that kind of extend out to provide some privacy for, for these areas while also letting natural, natural light in. The colors proposed, which are on a color materials board here, they provided paint chips. They're generally matching the existing color. There's an example of the, of the type of kind of cast iron hardware for the hanging doors, as well as the kind of opaque glass panels that are proposed for, for the doors. So moving on to these sections, we'll just cover a couple here. This is kind of an example of the style of the door. This area in particular is fixed in place to, to screen the ATM. Moving along, again, these, this entrance can be accessed from the side, straight through the center, or from the, from the other side as well. And there was some, you know, some comment received from the building department concerning the style of the door and whether they'd be compliant with ADA requirements and, and the amount of force it would take to open them. And again, their, the intent is that, that employees will operate these doors. And, let's see. So that's, that about sums it up for the, for the changes that are, that are proposed and the existing conditions. The, the project meets all, all standards for the C1 local shopping district. It continues the existing use. Obviously, it does change some of the conditions for the, for the seating area, which is, you know, which does serve both the grocery store and the, and the center as a whole. And that, that basically concludes, concludes my presentation. As I said before, it, it does add eight hundred and fifty square feet, and that's due to the enclosure of some of the seating areas, as well as the, the loading berth on the, to the east side as well. And then, one last thing I wanted to mention as well. This is in the Paradise San Clemente specific plan area, which was adopted in 1979. And it generally was, was about creating kind of a cohesive corridor. I think, you know, at, at the time, they were having some, some trouble with the shopping center being, being a bit rundown. It's changed quite a bit since that time. I think the, the, much the intent of that plan was to, was to create a cohesive corridor through landscaping, through having common landscaping, specific sign requirements throughout, you know, from San Clemente all the way through to Paradise. And also asking for, well, calling specifically for planning of eucalyptus, which I found interesting. But, but calling for continuity between the, between the facades. And I think what, maybe not so clear on the plans, but this facade, while it does update obviously some of the materials and add some new elements in the, in the barn doors, the landscaping, moving the cart corrals, generally continues the, the theme of the, of the, of the shopping center. So that concludes my presentation. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Doug. I'm going to start over to my left with Nicolau and ask Nicolau if he has any questions for staff.
No questions. Thank you.
Dan.
No questions.
Mr. Bundy.
I had a question on the main entrance. As I looked over the plans, it didn't look like that could be secured, that there was still an opening at one end and where the, the ATM was. This wasn't something that was going to be secured at night so nobody could get in. Is that correct?
Correct. Let me see if I can pull up the, the plan here. So this, this is still, this still remains open here on the side where it, where it connects to the Paradise Cleaners. This is still, I believe, you know, fully accessible even with the doors closed. This area over to the east, you know, this, because of the addition of the wall here and the existing walls to the, to the west here, this, this can be fully enclosed. I'm actually not certain whether, whether these doors can be, can be locked, or if that's the intent, but maybe the applicant can, can speak to that.
Right. Okay. Phyllis, any questions about this?
Right, no, I have one question. You talked about the roof on the loading area?
Yes.
And you said that it was going to follow the roofline?
Yes.
But the quote unquote story poles that they put up, which was really a string attached from the wall, the halfway wall blocking the area, and the building itself goes all the way up to where the dormer windows are. They are showing it going up to the roof of the dormer window.
So you say they connect to here?
That's how they...
Right. But this is...
That's how they did it. That's the picture I took today.
But that's the actual line. Is that right, Mr. Bush?
Yeah, this, this is what's being proposed. We can, we can, yeah, we can, we can ask the applicant. It may be, it may be an error in, in the installation of them. This is, this is really what's being proposed and what's, what's intended. These kind of dormer features, which may cover AC units, roof mounted AC units, I'm not sure. This extends to the roof as, as shown.
That's not what was done here.
Yeah, I think there were some, also some issues with the wind blowing things around, but I apologize if those weren't...
Well, you don't have to want to put them up so you don't have to apologize. That's all I have now.
Okay. Thank you. All right. So who for the applicant is going to speak tonight?
Evening Commissioners. My name is Jim Perkins. I'm with DeClare and Associates. We're the architect, and I brought with me Jeff Albright from Nugget, if you have any questions for him as well. Doug, you hit all the high points on the drawings, and it was very thorough presentation. Nice job, Doug. Just to clarify a couple of things, on the, on the right side, Commissioner Bundy, those doors were not, are not going to secure the front door. They are just provided as a screen for inclement weather, so they can be closed flexibly or opened, but they will mostly be opened. We depicted them in various configurations, but when the weather's nice, they're going to largely be stacked behind each other, so you're only going to see one door from each pair. They'll be behind each other. And the idea was that if it were raining or really cold, that they could be closed to kind of create a semi-protected area for people to enjoy the tables and chairs that are already there. And Commissioner Metcalf, to confirm, the, the drawing is correct, the tape must have got out of control, but we will not be covering those dormers on the east side. We're going to follow the existing...
That's actually...
Can we have you step up to the mic?
Please, step up. Yes.
Jeff Albright with Nugget Market. I apologize for the, the tape being put up incorrectly. I didn't know that it was. It had blown down in the last windstorm, and so I, I let my guys know to put it back up, and apparently it didn't get up in the right location. Till just now, I didn't realize that.
Thank you.
The, one thing I wanted to clarify too, it's, is that the two small rooms that are formed on this elevation, the one on the right is existing and is currently used for Nugget staff meetings, but also is, the public has been invited and has had meetings and events in that room. Right now, it exists. It has swinging doors. It will just have a different type of doors, but other than that, the function is really not changing. The, the rest of the canopy overhang, the idea with the sliding doors was to get flexibility. Like I said, most of the time, it will be open and basically be used as it is now, except with tables underneath it. But if somebody wanted to use perhaps a room on the left and they needed some privacy, that, those will be closed. The, the room on the left and the room on the right will probably be closed at night because there's, there's a TV in one of the rooms right now that, that the public might use for their meetings, and those need to be secure. But largely, the doors that face the street are going to remain open and unlocked.
Is that the length of your presentation about this? Would Mr. Albright care to contribute something?
Well, I think, I think it's been covered. The Still family, the Eric, the, the owners that purchased this building, that own Nugget Market, we've had quite a few meetings to determine what would be the best and what the community is really asking for. The idea on the additional seating and the multipurpose spaces, the, the ones to the left and to the right, is to provide things that the community could use that's in addition to the seating that's, that's located on the right. So we get a lot of folks that walk, and they walk past, and we get a lot of folks that, that come and enjoy coffee, and they're there for quite a while. A lot of them sit on the inside now, but had asked through the course of the interior remodel for, for additional seating, for some, someplace that they could go and not be in the, in the way of shoppers. So that, that was our response to that. As far as the loading dock, you know, we're just looking for something to help protect some of the, the things that we have from some of the weather that's going on, whether it be rain or, or wind or sun. So that's, that's kind of what we're after there.
Okay. Great. I'm going to ask the Commissioners if they have any questions for either of you. Nicolau, do you have any questions?
No, not at this time.
Dan.
One quick question. So there was some mention, I was looking for it, about the parking count.
That it's still within requirement.
Yeah, but is there a shared parking easement across the commercial spaces in that lot? And if so, what, what are the general terms of that?
I don't know if there's a legal easement, but the parking lot is shared by several buildings in that.
So is the parking count that you've outlined a dedicated, fully fee simple ownership to Nugget Market, or is it larger and include some of the neighboring spots?
That, that I believe is all the, all the parking spots that are on Nugget's parcels, per se.
Yeah, it would be, generally speaking, in commercial properties like this, in inline shopping centers, with multiple owners in a configuration like you have, which is several ingress egresses where folks can cross over, there's in-place easements.
It's, it's my understanding that, that at the time of the original approval, they were looking at Aegis and, and the market all as one unit. And so I believe that there, there was originally an agreement of, of shared parking.
Okay. So...
Just a moment. He's speaking.
So just to, I don't think there's an issue here, I'm just curious, right? So there's a few different scenarios that could occur here. You've got Aegis next door, and then you've got these commercial uses. And it appears that the traffic and the parking is not necessarily dedicated per particular use, but everybody uses it, right? So sometimes you have strict parking ratios associated with each use, and therefore you'd have to provide it, or they say you might need two, you need two per, you need two per, but in the aggregate, because you share parking and everybody's got different uses, and you're going to use some in the day, and he's going to use some at night, the ratios can come down. So I think it's an important thing, and I don't think we're adding square footage that result in more parking. You know, maybe a few more people hang around for longer, so maybe there is a few more needs. But I think it's an important thing to determine if there is a shared parking easement, and if so, we should take that into account in our evaluation.
Anything else, Dan?
No, I'd just make a comment that it's, it's a good idea. Dare I mention other shopping or food centers, but Whole Foods is doing it, they've done it. Woodlands is doing it, they've done it. And you're right, people do sit there, I've sat there, so having a, a spot like that that feels a little bit private and is, is out of the weather is a, is a nice idea and a nice plus for the community.
Okay. Mr. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for the applicant here before we go into public comment?
Yeah, I, I looked at this a long time, just to try to figure out what you were trying to accomplish. I, I didn't realize that this was, this room to the left was set up, that the community would be able to reserve and use. And so I, from some of the groups that I'm with, we're always looking for larger places to meet, but I didn't, I guess I wasn't aware that there would be enough need for something like that to dedicate, you know, money, space, detailing to create something like that. I, I can understand, I think, why getting rid of the entrance there and putting the two entrances closer together, you know, it probably makes, makes a lot of sense. And I like the idea of, I think, covering the loading dock is a good idea, and the corrals are a good idea. But I'm having a little trouble with, with some of the barn, barn door type look to the, the hanging glass that's, that's there, that's going to be controlled by the employees. As I, I look at Aegis, and I look at the facade with Nugget, you know, it's got, you know, it's sort of semi-commercial craftsman style to the whole thing, and these, these new hanging doors really seem to get away from that and disrupt that, and I'm just not, not sure that that's really the direction to go with that.
That said, we'll talk about that. Do you have any questions about these guy, for these guys about their application? Are you asking him a question as to why they're putting those doors there, or a question about...
I guess the, the question is really the little community area that you've got there. That's something that's not accessed from the store, is you would reserve, you know, I'm, I'm just wondering about the need for something like that.
It'd probably be better to, to, to answer that question. We've got some facilities that, we have a similar setup, and I think you mentioned Whole Foods and other, other type grocers that have adopted this type of philosophy. We've found that catering to the community's needs is not only good for the community, but it's great for us. So we have folks that reserve it for Bridge, or ladies that just have coffee, or guys that have coffee, and they just don't want to be right in the way of everybody. You know, they, they want to be part, but not so much in the line of fire, so to speak. So providing a, an area to have additional seating, which is just so key to having folks come and shop, you, you know, you want to create a, a destination, not just a place to pick up groceries. You know, you want to, you want to fit in and, and be part of the neighborhood and really root yourself in. And that type of philosophy of, of creating these spaces for Nugget has been very successful. So the, the idea on the, the barn doors is to keep it light and airy. I mean, just, I really, I live up in the Sacramento area, but I really enjoy the weather down here, and, and I know Eric, the owner, feels the same way. Having a door, you can open it up, but when you do have wind and, and rain, the few times that you, you seem to have it, being able to close it up and not be absolutely weather tight, but just provide a little bit of protection. And it doesn't, it doesn't have to be closed all the way, but still give you that open air feel. I think that's the idea. You know, they're not, they're not ginormous spaces, so, you know, what we discussed internally is how do you do that, but still make it feel open? You know, so we wrestled with a couple of different designs, but this just seemed to fit the bill the best.
Was there any thought in the design to having like a planter wall that would be at the edge of the overhang with some, you know, screening that would come down, that was plastic, that would help with rain and help with wind?
That specifically, no. We didn't talk about the plastic, although we have created at some of the, some other locations, an environment that is more like Elfin Isle, where they adopt outdoor seating areas that are enclosed by plastic. And that's definitely a way to go. This just seemed like a, a great way to fit in with the rest of the center, that we weren't departing, and that it wouldn't be a maintenance thing as, as much like, because we, we do have some of the, our stores that have the tarps. And it's, it's a, we tarp off our cart corrals a lot of times, so when it's nice weather, you open it up, and when it's not, you close it up. So, when it's nice weather, you open it up and when it's not, you close it up. But it's, it's always a maintenance thing. The, it's just a maintenance thing.
Yeah. Hopefully, they would be open most of the time.
They are, most of the time.
Any thought to having the ATM inside the store?
Yes. Uh, the footprint of the store is so small that having it inside and still get that sense of privacy is, is tough. We've had a lot of internal discussion on the, the right spot for the ATM. Believe it or not, the ATM folks have a lot to say about it, too. With, you know, you have to create an environment that's somewhat private, that you don't have people right in your business. But yet, you, you know, you can wait in line and use the ATM effectively. You have to put in a location that is somewhat visible because you don't wanna have a problem, you know, getting robbed or, or having an issue like that. So, for the, the safety and the security aspect of it. So, you know, we wanted to keep it up in the front end somewhere, but not, not in the store. So, it, it, it's been a tough challenge for sure. We hope that we've found a spot that is kind of agreeable for everybody.
Anything else, Dr. Bundy? All right, then. Phyllis, your questions for these gentlemen?
Well, first, I want to reply to something that Dan brought up because I knew an answer that the others didn't know. Some of the parking is designated there. As a matter of fact, there are a couple of parking spaces in front of the cleaners that say for cleaners only. And I think there's a time period standard. I think there's some notification at the other end where the gym is, too. So, as I say, there are designations and I think they were in the original plans that were put together. As far as the questions go, I just wanted to clarify something. This new room that you have, your community room, gathering room, that's where the florist was before?
Oh, well, there's, there's, yes. There's two, there's two new rooms. There's one where the cart corral storage, well, I mean, if you really look at it, there's, there's three new spaces. There's one where the cart corral storage was. There's one where the floral storage area was. And then, there's just kind of open air seating in between. So, the, the, where the floral was, we've put up a, a flat screen TV on the wall. And we're in the process of, of getting, you know, set up in there to where you could, you could do PowerPoint or a presentation if you wanted to, or really be a little more secure from, call it the, the busyness of the store and the elements. The, where the cart corral is, that's, from, from our standpoint, the use would be a little more open air. But if you wanted to enclose it for purposes of privacy or noise or weather, you could do it. Again, it's not to create a, a weather tight environment, but just to give you a little more privacy or, or protection from the weather. And then, in between, it's just, it's just seating to where you can still be out of the way, but, but you have to be a part.
Okay.
I know, I'm out of the school. If it ain't broke, don't fix it. And I liked it the way it was before you started and the interior also. Is this something, there've been a lot of comments made to us as we've worked on the rebuilding of a hotel about the fact it's a Marriott and they have a, a set idea that they bring wherever they put up a Marriott hotel. Is this what Nugget Market does wherever they have a store? They have pretty much the same layout, the same amenities, let's call them?
Uh, no, all of our stores are, are fairly unique to the communities. We do have a prototypical layout, but a prototypical layout is really challenging to implement in an existing condition. So, in this existing condition, we fit what we needed to fit into the, the envelope that we were working with. The challenges, to speak to the interior, the challenges is on the interior is to fit all the offerings that Paradise didn't offer. In all of our surveys that we took in the community, what did they want? It was, you're not carrying these items. And then, the next one was price. The layout is definitely disruptive and it's always disruptive whenever you go in and remodel. I don't know of anybody that, that comes in and says, man, you move stuff around, thank you. It's just, it's tough. And we, and we, and we hear about it daily and it's, it's part of the process of, it's, it's true, we did move a lot of stuff around, but we've added this many SKUs and this many new offerings. So, you don't have to go to multiple places to get what you need. You can just come right here. So, it, it's, it's our livelihood, it's our survival. And so, yeah, we, we take it seriously and we are not gonna make everybody happy before we do the best we can.
Well, as I say, the interior, we have nothing to do with the exterior. I think you've made it too crowded and have too much happening and too much going on and.
Okay.
The barn doors.
Phyllis, we'll get into that in a minute here. So, no, we're not gonna discuss design right now. If you have a question about the design, you're, please ask a question.
Yes, ask a question. Why, I'm not, I'm not talking about the barn doors that are sliding. I'm talking about at the end, the loading dock. Why in the world did you make them into barn doors? Had to molding so they look like the doors on a barn, okay? You're changing the whole look. The center and Aegis were supposed to complement each other. They were built to be the same, same colors, same window trim and stuff like that. And you're changing it considerably and I don't understand why you are making those changes even in style. Never mind what you're adding. And that's what I'm trying to ascertain.
To specifically speak to the, the loading dock side, it seemed like it fit. But if that doesn't meet what your requirements are, I'm definitely open to suggestions.
Can I ask a follow-up question on that?
Hang on a sec. Phyllis, do you have anything else you wanna ask or let this gentleman respond to?
Not at this time, not at this time.
Okay. Okay. So, go ahead, Dan.
The, the design of those doors, is that a steel moment frame? Is that what you've got there?
Uh, no, I don't.
Or is that wood?
Those are wood, I believe.
So, the crossbar, is that, is that steel or is it wood?
On the barn, on the doors, are they steel with wood inside or they just?
No, it strikes me as a steel angled bar because that's what's giving it its integrity. So, you can keep moving it back and forth and it doesn't warp. So, that's my question. It moves away from what Phyllis would call a barn door if, if, if that was on the other side of the door and you just had the lats, right? So, that's my question. Is it, is, is the, everything I see that's white, which looks like a square with an angle, is that metal?
Everything you see, the siding is wood, the trim is wood to match the existing, all the steel frame will be concealed on the inside. The diamond you see is just indicating the swing. It's not.
Yeah, that's the swing of the door and this is the, the white, is the wood trim and, and cross brace. Okay. All right. I just have a couple of questions. If you're done, Phyllis. Okay. All right. So, bicycles, there's been the comment about the bicycles. So, you know, it's very important to accommodate the racks and get them in so that you have the right type of rack in the right place, clearly accessible, clearly identifiable, and people know about it. So, that is not really shown here, right?
No, it's not. And it was something I overlooked. We definitely need to have bicycle racks. We were talking it on, on the way down and we'd like to put them in front of a plantation shutter.
Right in here. Okay. So, I know that a lot of people stop and eat on their bikes. So, it's, it's really important to have that there.
And, and in a visible location.
Right.
I completely agree.
Okay. Uh, I'm gonna ask you about the interior. And what I'm asking about is, it looks like the loss of interior seating is now moved to the exterior. Is that what I'm seeing in the floor plan?
Uh, no, the interior seating stays the same.
Does.
Are you talking about on the inside of the building?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah, that, that remains.
Okay, it does remain. So, along this wall, you know, are some small cafe tables and so forth on the interior. Is that a table and so forth?
Correct.
Yeah, all right. So, that's remaining. And I wasn't sure if you were trying to increase your retail space on the interior and move people to the exterior by doing this out here.
No, we're, we're actually trying to increase the amount of seating.
Right.
We get a lot, we get a huge lunch crowd.
Yeah.
And we honestly don't have a place to seat them.
And the old market used to have outdoor barbecues. Is that something that the Nugget does?
That's something that we're just now getting into.
Okay, so, and.
We used to do it a long time ago and it kind of fell off favor for a while, but it's, it's definitely back.
So, there's, that takes space, but that's usually out in front of the building somewhere.
Correct.
Right, okay.
And it's, it's removable and then gets wheeled back and goes back.
So, in truth, you're doing this with two reasons that I'm, and I ask you to affirm this. One is the seating. Second is that you're gonna leave the produce stalls out and sort of close them up at night. That's really what's going on with these sliding doors?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Well, seating to, to provide a little bit of protection when you need it.
Okay. All right. If that's all the commissioners have to ask, I'm going to let these gentlemen take a seat and ask the public to step up to the microphone for opening of a public comment section on this project. Uh, we can find somebody if no one will stand up. So.
Where's Jane?
Yeah, Jane should be here, right? All right. So, I do not see any public comment on this project. So, we will close the public comment section of this. And we will bring it back up here to the commission to talk about. So, uh, Phyllis, you have some strong opinions on this and, and you wanna get it out, too.
Well, we're happy to. I don't care for the design. I think it's overcrowded. I don't like the produce carts, whatever you will call them, outside. I think they took a very attractive looking center, a very attractive looking grocery and have just put too much to it and overdone it and crowded everything together. And I find it not as pleasant as it used to be. And now, to be adding more things, especially with the sliding barn, now I'm talking about what they're calling barn doors, not doors on a barn. And these glass barn doors and plantation shutters and why don't we bring in another three or four more styles of architecture and design and we can really make it look like a showroom in a furniture store? It just doesn't work for me. And I think it takes away from the center. I think it takes away from its companionship with Aegis, which is a very good looking building, that people have spent a lot of money to live there and had certain expectations because this is the grocery store that they are going to and stuff. And it just doesn't belong.
Okay, so you don't have any positive aspects to this change, I'm hearing, and that.
Uh, the positive thing is I'm very happy to say they still sell Japanese sweet potatoes and selling places around where I can buy them.
Okay, then.
Other than that, enough.
So, then, just as a question as to what is there now versus what they're proposing, you are also saying that, that there shouldn't be a change to it and that you would just leave as is rather than make any modifications?
And take the produce inside.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, your commentary, please, or your thoughts about the application?
I, I think overall, I like the direction that you're going and what you're, what I understand now that you're trying to achieve with this. I do think that the sliding glass doors detract from the style of the building and gets it away from Aegis. And doing a, a different type of enclosure since it's not a security enclosure and is not needed, you know, all the time, you know, something along the line of the planter wall or just a, you know, some type of, of barrier that a tar, a plastic car would, would be, I think, more in keeping with the style of the buildings, but achieve the, the same goal. So, I, uh, that's, that's my biggest concern with the way the appearance is. I think what you're trying to achieve and what, what you wanna get with the moving the entrances around is desirable and, and fits in. And I like, like the idea. I think that's great that there's a community room. I, I didn't, didn't realize that they were in that much demand and, you know, that popular. But that's a nice idea.
Okay.
Yeah.
Good commentary. Nicolo, your thoughts?
I, I think that the project is very simple, very smart. I, I, I do understand and I really like it. I think it's exciting. I think that the sliding door panels, although I forgot to ask if there was any way to see what they look like more in detail because I haven't really understood that. But I think that the panels add flexibility and they're interesting. They're easy to maneuver, so I understand the concept. And, and also, it is a perfect solution to improve the usability by the, by everyone. So, I'm, I think it's really clean and you, you, you know, you really change it with, you know, small little details. And I like the dynamic effect. But if there is a, a way to see what they look like, are they still?
Nicolo, to your, Nicolo, to your right here is a sample board, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's been hiding down here, so. Dan, your thoughts about it?
My thoughts are aesthetically, I'm, I'm kind of neutral to it. I see what you're trying to achieve. I think net benefit is good. I think, you know, Nugget's under change, so some are gonna like it, some aren't. And I think the jury's out, honestly. People really liked the previous market. I'm sure they could think it would be improved. But my wife shops there and I think she's trying to determine whether she's gonna shop there long-term or not. And there's a lot of changes that are going on, so I don't say good or bad, but I think the community is evaluating that. So, that said, it is a material change to the exterior. You know, it's a significant commercial asset where you've got a major investment. So, I would lean in and, and allow for, for that kind of a change because I think you'll find out soon enough whether people like it or not. It'll affect your business enough that if you didn't like it, you'd probably take it off in a year. So, I think that'll flush itself out. I do have questions, which are a little semantics about the parking. So, I looked at Google Maps and if my count is correct, there's only 80 spots in front and around that building. So, the 172 as a count, I think includes the entire shopping center. So, you know, there's a small change here. The other thing I'd say is I looked, the C1 zoning says, I think, that the parking ratio is, is 200, one space per 200. So, that math would say you need 180 spots for the existing and, you know, 184 less the parking area. So, you know, it's a small amount. If you've got 172, are we already non-conforming? I don't know. So, open question. And then, secondly, the other thing I would say is, you know, you've got probably what is a temporary use there in the fitness facility? Right? Not the ideal use, not necessarily what people would want, probably not the highest and best use from an income standpoint. So, my guess is, and I don't know this, but as soon as that lease comes up and the world's doing well, you know, some other use is gonna come in there. And as soon as some other use comes in there that's a little bit more intense, you're gonna have a serious parking problem in this location. So, you don't have it today. We're not making a material change, but I would say in the future, that's coming. So, we just wanna be cognizant of any changes that occur on this site and what it means to the site as a whole. So, I think that easement language is pretty important. And, you know, there might be some, honestly, I don't know the document, but there could be a violation within that easement agreement that says that you cannot add square footage and therefore further tax the parking requirement on the site, given it's a shared requirement. So, before I would, I would honestly vote on this, I would have to see what that document says and see if, and confirm that there's no issue or violation to the document. So, it's a matter of pulling title and seeing, you know, what that document says. So, it's just really a cleanup matter. Outside of that, no, no, I'm, I'm in favor of the change. And it's not my personal preference, everything you're doing, but I don't think that's, it's, it's, it's negative enough for me to, to be opposed to it.
So, okay, Dan. I hear that as a question to staff and I don't know what you have at your fingertips. But think about that for a minute. And Dr. Bundy has a question.
My, my recollection from when Paradise first went in, that there was a big problem with the fitness. that there was a big problem with the fitness center that existed at the time, that they didn't really want to have shared parking, because they wanted, you know, this rundown shopping center without very many parking spots to be able to have access to all the parking spots they wanted. And there was something that was worked out that it ended up being a shared agreement for the parking.
Yeah, that's correct. I mean, at the time, it was approved, it was approved with this many spaces, which was deemed to be adequate at the time. So, it's not a change from what was proposed at that point in time.
So, somewhere, there is an assessment that says that there is a certain amount of parking?
Yes.
And that is legal parking surrounding the entire building?
Yes.
Or conforming to a definition of required parking?
Yes, and there actually, some of that parking is even was created through a complex arrangement between different property owners to go back behind the gym, which portion of that was actually town property. So, there was a complex arrangement, but at that point in time, that was said, this is adequate parking, this is enough, and that's, I would say, would be the conforming number.
There is...
As far as we could tell, we didn't see any easement document in the files that said there was a formal arrangement that legally binding arrangement between parties. It was sort of an understood requirement, but we haven't pulled, you know, I don't...
And it wasn't conditions of approval at the time?
Well, the required number of spaces was, it was clearly on the plans at the time. That was, so that was the number of spaces that was required.
And just one correction of the, the number of spaces for a shopping center of this size is one to 250 square feet, because it is over 20,000 square feet.
So, there's usually two paths here. One is the entitlement path with the city, of which when a project like this, if it comes in as one project or it has multiple owners and things happen, you know, you'd say, okay, you can do these things conditioned on you guys working on an agreement and sharing it, because it's appropriate. That would, so that's your entitlement in your city. And then, there would be a private property, and it would be highly unusual for there not to be a formal recorded document, because it memorializes the rights of all the property owners there. And nobody in their right mind would buy a shopping center or inline spot without knowing what their egress, ingress would be, because there's multiple number around the site. So, there's gotta be a document on here. And if these guys go forward and we approve it, I don't think we're necessarily doing anything wrong, per se, but they could be in violation of the agreement, which is more between private property owners. So, it's a cleanup matter to just make sure there's not a violation there. But to the extent that we go forward, assuming that that, you know, that the private property guys figure it out on their own, then that's okay. But it's just something to sort of watch for and see.
To that extent, then, we're not liable for that approval or making sure that that is a conformance, conforming item within our approval?
That's correct. However, if the commission desires, you could suggest a project condition to direct the property applicant to provide any agreement or proof of shared parking.
Okay, Phyllis?
There's some inter-agreement with Aegis, too, I think, as far as using each other's parking.
Right.
So, that may add into the total numbers.
When they pull the title report, the easement document will specifically define who has what. And I'm sure it's reciprocal in both directions.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying with Aegis, back and forth.
It'll be flushed out in there how many parties are involved.
I would just say that whenever I've pulled into Aegis, there's never any parking over there, but there's always parking over in front of the shopping, Paradise Shopping Center. So, but that would be a condition we would put on it. And Nicolo, in that sample board, these doors are wood, is that correct, with the glass?
Although, it's not specified, it shows...
No, I know, the frame is wood, though.
Yeah, the frame is specified but not the door, but it shows wood in the photo.
Shows wood around it, okay.
Yeah.
So, you know, I agree with Dan and that the idea is a good idea. It's a change to the shopping center. I think that it might enhance the way people congregate or feel their, feel about being there. And it is the way of the world right now. It is what is occurring, and you guys are trying to stay with it. So, I think that that's... My feeling, I can make the findings for this, but at this point, then, I would ask for a motion on this with or without a condition of confirmation of the agreement between parties. Yes, Adam?
I just want to clarify, there was some discussion as well about bicycle parking as well.
Yes, and that would be, exactly, thank you for reminding me, that would be a condition of this, that the bicycle parking, there is no requirement for this property for number of spaces of bicycles, is there?
You want to answer?
Yeah, so, it is my understanding that if they were adding over 2,000 square feet, then they would be required to add additional spaces.
But the original, the last approval, there were sort of an area designated for bicycle parking. I think in Doug's presentation, you saw a sort of a, one of those undesirable parkings, bike parking structures. So, there's no required number, per se, but I think that can be determined by the planning commission. And if you want, you can also defer that to staff to look at.
And where is that in the drawing here, Doug?
It's, I don't believe it's shown in the drawing.
Okay.
It is shown.
In the existing?
Added in the photograph. I think it exists, oh, boy. There it is.
Oh, my God, it's hiding in the corner there, right?
Four.
All right. So, I think that...
Six, Peter.
It's defined as six, all right. I think that I would ask that, as a condition of this, that the staff check in with bike and ped for the minimum number of spaces that they would ask for at this location, whether it be, you know, probably no more than 10, but up to 10 or so, I think would be appropriate. So, that would mean that I would ask for a motion of approval based on those items, bicycles and the parking issue being clarified by staff for what's riding with the property and what we are actually approving. So, you would actually affirm that, and if there's a problem, then you'd go back to the applicant to get it cleaned up. But we want, we would put that into our condition of approval, that you go do that and get that clarified, not for our sake, but for the town's sake and for the applicant's sake. Okay, is anybody willing to make that motion?
Sure. Okay, so, I'll try, okay? Make a motion to adopt the resolution number 16-016, approving design review application number 16-002. There will be allowing the construction of facade improvements, including enclosed seating areas, cart corrals, and an enclosed storage area located at 5627 Paradise Drive, based upon the findings in accordance with Section 18, period 30, period 070 of the municipal code and subject to the conditions listed in the attached resolutions. And that provided, or with the condition that there are no requirements triggering increase of parking.
No, it's to confirm the required amount of parking and what is available and what is the agreement between the entities of the shopping center for that parking?
Do I need to repeat that, or it's good enough? Okay, and with the condition that staff request and work with the applicant to add at least a number of bike parking, minimum up to 10.
As requested by Bike Ped Committee, yes.
Commissioner Metcalf?
No.
Commissioner Bundy?
No.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner McCann?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
I would like the record to show my note vote is based on that I cannot make finding number four.
So, I'll read the appeal rights. Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within 10 calendar days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department, Courtaud Madera Town Hall, and a $300 filing fee is required.
Thank you. All right, we've gotten through that. It's four of you guys, how many guys with the, two guys? All right, so, before we go into...
Thank you.
...the village application, I would like a short break, a five-minute break, and then we'll be back. So, we are back. Thank you for all your patience. It's a long night, but the gentleman from Mesa Ridge already, and Mr. Boyle is going to make a presentation about 1618 Redwood Highway, a preliminary, preliminary plan and precise plan amendment, conditional use permit and design review for modifications to the center court area of the village at Courtaud Madera, including the removal of the tower, the installation of three independent retail kiosks, new planter areas, seat walls, and ramps. That's a lot, so please proceed, Mr. Boyle.
It is. Yes, this is modification to the center court of the village of Courtaud Madera. Here's the site plan showing the entire parcel, Highway 101, parking the center and the center court. The general scope of working intention of the project is to revitalize that center area. It's quite large and spacious and a lot of empty space. And in addition to that, the tower is no longer structurally sound and is also, from what I've heard from various folks, is kind of inhibits some of the view from east to west, also inhibits some of the storefrontage for the gap and the former Banana Republic, in terms of visibility to their storefrontage. So, the blue circles indicate areas that are being removed, main areas that are being removed. And they include the infamous tower, the two trellises on the north-south end of the center courtyard area. These trellises that kind of extend out from the buildings. The large landscaped area here, and then some smaller elements are being removed. Proposed to be added are three kiosks, each approximately 300 square feet in area. One, two, and three. Here's the location of the former tower. Location of a seating wall around the existing fountain. The existing fountain will stay and will not be moved. And this area here will be install a ramp and landscaping. Green areas are also additional landscaping throughout the center area. Before on the left and after looking west on the right. Mount Tam is not shown, but it's right there. So, again, opening up the space and overall. Before and after looking east towards the bay, here with the tower, and now with the tower gone. And here, here's a seat wall, and here's one of the kiosks, two kiosks and the third kiosk there. The, in terms of the kiosks themselves, and I have a materials board there next to Commissioner Metcalf, three, the three columns are, as along of the different materials, are the three different materials that the applicants will use for the different kiosks. They want to have some flexibility, and those are the variety of materials that they want to use, both for the, you know, for the siding and for the upper area, for the screening around the AC units and so on. The kiosk will be for, obviously for retail. They could include food retail, and that's why they need a conditional use permit, because to have a conditional use permit in the commercial zoning district in the town of Courtaud Madera, you need a conditional use permit. Did I say that twice? Yes. And the other kiosks may just be retail, retail products, not food. These spaces will probably change hands over time, and so the general difference between the food kiosk and the non-food kiosk is, food kiosk has these sliding windows for handing food out. General, my understanding, patrons will not go inside the kiosk if it is serving food, but they will go inside the kiosk if it's serving, you know, if they're selling products, sunglasses, whatever it may be. Landscaping along each one of the kiosks is shown here. Lighting plan is, they've given us great detailed lighting. All the lighting is Night Sky compliant. There will be lighting underneath the new railing along the seat wall, along the wall itself, lighting along the railing as well. Accessibility will be greatly increased with the whole area. It will all be ADA compliant. They will smooth out some of the rough surfaces overall. The light posts themselves, the posts will remain, the heads will be new. Those are Night Sky compliant with a, this is a solid hat above the bulb, so then the light does not go above. Down lighting at each kiosk under each overhang. Also, proposed furniture plan, and this shows where this movable furniture will be. You should probably wear, there's furniture out there today. They will need to keep, you know, these paths of travel open for, obviously for patrons as well as for accessibility. Various seating arrangements, both on the seating wall itself, umbrellas and tables and chairs for the patrons. This is just an image of the color board. The color board, obviously, which you see with you is what will be approved and what will be, need to be installed. And that concludes my report. The large team from Mesa Ridge, I think everybody except, everybody's here, and they can answer any questions that you have. And with that, I recommend, staff recommends that the preliminary plan and precise plan amendment be approved, as well as a conditional use permit and the design review application. And no specific or unusual conditions are applied to this at this time. I did, I do mention parking. And there is a, there's approximately 105 extra parking spaces at the village currently. It's very complex to calculate the number with all the different stores and a variety of different things, but we're quite confident that they're overparked. And these three kiosks will require four parking spaces. And that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Boyle. So, to kick this off, let's start with some questions for staff, if there are any, from Phyllis.
No.
Okay, Dr. Bundy?
No.
Okay, Dan?
Uh, no.
Okay, and Nicolo, do you have any questions for staff?
No, thank you.
Thank you. I think it's time for the applicant to step up and make their presentation, and please.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. My pleasure to appear before you this evening. I'm gonna introduce myself and our team, and yes, we are very well represented tonight. I'm Garrett Newland, Development VP with Mesa Ridge. Also in development is Giancarlo Filatiga from our tenant coordination group. We've got Courtney Dunlap, David Piper with our design group, and we've got our brand-new property manager that a lot of you know from past history here in the community, Stan. So, we also have Jim Drews and Juan Velazquez with LDA Architects, and we have our landscape architect, Pete Peterson and Jason that, you know... So, I'll be calling on lifelines if we get into any of the technical details. Phil did a great job of introducing the project. I'll just add a few brief key points and then answer any questions you might have. Yeah, if you could, please. So, of course, we're talking about Village at Courtaud Madera. I know you're all very familiar with it. Forward back, okay, thanks. Just quickly, it's time for us to continue to... Just quickly, it's time for us to continue to update, renovate, and reinvest in the center. This is actually a very significant project for us, both in terms of investment and in what it does to increase many of the things that Phil talked about, and I'll get into them a little bit more as well. Here's the site plan, parking around. Phil already brought that up. I won't focus on that too much. Click. Yeah, I'm trying to roll. It's not rolling. Yeah. Now it's going. Okay. I want to write that down, Phil. Okay, second image that I wanted to show, wanted to point out, it's, I think it's in your packet, is just the areas of demo that we're proposing. We're proposing to tear down the existing tower and the trellises, as Phil mentioned, and redo some of the landscape areas. The tower is not ADA compliant. There are safety concerns with it. It's really not used. It's just roped off now. It also, in addition to blocking views into the center, it also inhibits our ability with some of the tenant storefronts in the center court area. An additional improvement, and you can go ahead and flip it there, there, Phil. This is just a shot from standing in the parking lot, looking due west. The before, this is the current with the tower, you can see it's pretty tight there, and then it opens up. Actually, our rendering should have a shot of Mount Tam in the background. I don't know if it was a cloudy day or if we just didn't float in the correct background, but Mount Tam is back there, believe me. In addition to improving accessibility and pedestrian flow, we're also raising the center court out of the floodplain. It's interesting, there's two different flood designations that kind of cut right through the center of this project, and this will raise the north side of the center court up out of the floodplain and create some steps and ADA, better ADA accessibility. You can go ahead and flip to the next one, Phil. Landscape plan. We're putting in better and more sustainable landscape here. The new planters that we're putting in, including California-appropriate, drought-resistant, drought-tolerant plants. You know, the lawns that we've had at the center in the past haven't worked very well. Too much traffic, and then water conservation efforts inhibit a healthy lawn in this kind of, in this kind of environment. We think what we're proposing will serve the center much better. And of course, the addition of three new kiosks. And I added the furniture plan, which Phil already showed you, but I think this is a pretty good view of the pedestrian access and flow through the center. This is an important aspect for us, and we're doing this not just here in Corder Madera, but in other places. Working on a project in Broadway, sorry, in Walnut Creek, Broadway Plaza redevelopment. We're going to put some of these very same kiosks in our Broadway Lane area in that project. We're doing it in Santa Monica Place, down in Santa Monica, some of our other outdoor centers. The big opportunity for us here is to add food, and Stan could speak to this, but the number-one thing that we're always being asked by our shoppers is more food opportunities. And the inline layout of the center is pretty well leased today, and there's not as many opportunities for, you know, for food, and we think this will enhance our opportunity for that significantly. The remaining photos are just some of the renderings of different views. You have them in your package. I don't need to spend too much time on them. We're proposing three different design options, and appreciate the consideration for the conditional use permit to move forward now. Phil's right, the tenants over time will certainly turn over. You'll sign anywhere typically from a three to five to seven-year lease for these, and, you know, some businesses are more successful, and they certainly, they certainly turn over over time. If approved tonight, our intention would be to move forward with the project in, still in 2016. There's actually a lot of work here, as you can see from the plans, utilities and grading and hardscape, landscape, and the kiosks themselves. There are several weeks and months of work ahead of us, and we don't want to impact holiday season, so we would need to get started pretty quickly. So in summary, we believe this project provides many benefits, not only to our center, but to the community. We're adding some potential dining options. We're improving a key space for gathering. We're improving accessibility and pedestrian flow, upgrading landscape areas, sustainability, and then providing a new design that, again, will certainly serve the center very well for us going forward. So we appreciate your consideration, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm going to start with Phyllis and ask her if she has any questions for this gentleman.
Yes, I do. Could you go back to the one that showed the tower that's coming down? Yes, right there. I'm just wondering if it's the rendering that's different or what? Are you changing the facades of any of the buildings? See how the facade, see, that is different than the picture? And changing onings is, because none of that was mentioned in the plan, that's what I was just wondering.
Well, you're probably aware that Banana Republic is moving, and so this space will be a vacant space that we will then try to re-tenant with either a single-level tenant or potentially a two-level tenant. There's the opportunity there to do that. One of the questions that came up in our, in our review was accessibility and exiting requirements, and of course, we will have to meet that depending on the occupancy of first and second level for that building. So that's why that's a little bit different, is it's just showing a flat facade here.
Because you have no idea what
Because we don't know. It will certainly change. It's not going to be the same look as Banana Republic, certainly.
But still, there isn't a plan to change any of the facades in essence around? I mean, not one because it would be a new tenant, but other than that?
Other than that, no, no. As a new tenant comes in, that's when it'll, that's when it'll change.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bundy?
Any special requirements for the kiosks that have food as far as, you know, water, hand washing, things like that?
That is a great question. Jim or David, do you want to tackle that one? What up, Dave?
David Piper with Mesa Rich. Do you mean inside the kiosks or outside? That would be part of the tenant fit-out, and they would have to comply with health code, which would include hand washing sinks inside.
But you would have to supply that for the kiosk that were going to be used for food.
We would provide the shell, just like we provide empty tenant space for inline tenants, and the tenants are required to provide all of the components in the space. We do provide water, sewer, electric utilities.
Okay.
Right.
You're not asking for the public showers outside or anything like that?
But that, I'll ask about that later.
Okay. All right.
Thanks, David.
Anything else? All right. Dan?
Given the controversy of the last tower this group talked about, what is the history of this tower? Dare I ask Bob, because he may be the village elder, if he knows any history here, but, you know, where did the design come from? Was it part of the original design? Is it, is it, is it a special place that we should be considering?
Is it a sacred cow?
Yeah, exactly. Because modifying, you know, any aspect of the last tower on a different project was quite interesting.
So it was part of the original 1984 approval? I think at that time, it was towers go with shopping centers, and I think it was going, thought of as a sort of a, would-be landmark and identification of the center on this side of the highway. There was, I think, it was re-clad, and it was in 2005 to make it more substantial. I think added some stone over time, and that's, that's it. Other than that, it is, it's, it's been there since the inception, put it that way, when it was originally built.
Has there been any public outcry or comments related to it?
I've received no, no comments from the public from the notice or the story polls that are up regarding the kiosk.
Jimi Hendrix never played from there.
Sammy Hagar.
Sammy did.
But I think, actually, I think it is, it is worth noting that there were story polls, and I know the commission probably is aware, but there were story polls that were put up to actually physically locate where these kiosks would be, as well as some signs out at the center that discussed and described the fact that the tower would be eliminated. So I don't know when exactly that was put out there.
Two weeks, two weeks ahead of the meeting, if not earlier.
And I believe there was also a
And there was also a press release
Yes, we did issue a press release as well.
Yeah.
We didn't receive any comments either.
Surprising, yes.
That's what I have for now.
Okay. Nicola, questions for the Mesa Rich representatives?
Is there a material board for the kiosk? Is it these ones?
Yeah, it's that, it's that board.
Oh, these ones?
Mm-hmm.
Thank you. That's it.
Okay. I do have a couple of questions for you. So in essence, this replaces the old food court that used to be at the end of the building, number three, building number three. So in a way, it does.
It allows the opportunity for that to come back, and let me just briefly speak to that. As you, as you look at, again, not just the center, but these kinds of centers, as they, you know, this was built in the 80s, and every 10, 15, 20 years, there's a new generation of design. Retailers want a different way to express themselves, and we, as owners and managers, have to keep up with the times and continue to reinvest in the asset and the amenities at the asset, and this is another perfect example of that.
Sure.
So that's, that's kind of the reason, you know, you kind of come full circle at times.
There is, if you can speak to it, I mean, this does not have the same architectural identity that the tower across the highway has, but nonetheless, it is somewhat of an architectural identity there. And this is going away. I'm not sure anybody's going to miss it, but, you know, we need to do a welfare check on Jane Levinson. And we are not
Sure.
Seeing, I don't know where that stands with you guys, you know? Are you guys going to think about creating an architectural identity for the village over there? Yes, clearly, there's other things that are going to happen. We know that. So, you know, this is going away. In essence, something's coming in.
Well, Mr. Chairman, specific to the center court area, we don't believe that the tower is a sacred cow. It's maybe more of an eyesore today than a sacred cow or an architectural feature. As, as, you're right, as the center continues to mature over time, we certainly look for the opportunity to upgrade design, and it's challenging for a center of this size to do it a piece at a time, and we think that just doing the center court makes sense today. Other major tenants that might, that might come in will have other influences on the center, and we'll adjust to those as we go and bring them forward to your, for your consideration.
In the lighting design for this project, there's a number of types of lighting that are in there, and some of the lighting is called out at 5,000 Kelvin. Any reason that we couldn't ask that that be reduced to 3,500 Kelvin?
No problem.
In general, it's getting away from the white light enhances the space, and we'll comment on other project elsewhere in this meeting. And I think that this doesn't really bode toward future development, but we know it's coming. So the last thing about lighting and signs is the signs on the kiosks themselves. So we endured a couple of evenings regarding signage before at the village. So this sign lighting is not quite clear to me. It says backlit, but I'm not sure if it's illuminated through the letters or it's simply backlit behind the letters, number one.
David?
Check the criteria we wrote, because it does address all that.
On PL 4.0, it would have either internally illuminated letters or reverse halo letters.
Right, so you're giving yourself the option?
Yeah.
And is there a reason to not just stick with one of those and have it backlit?
Because this is the interior of the center, we are really just using the sign criteria we have for inline stores and applying it the same way to give them the same options.
Right.
And on the outside, it faces the outside, and the concern is to create a uniform identity or light, method of lighting, and then a consistent coloring.
So as I understand it, that on the interior of the center, you guys have free form in your samples of other signs in there, show virtually anything in terms of corporate identity or trademark and so forth?
Right.
And then our hands are off of the interior of that courtyard? So we can't say no red signs or no yellow signs or no, you know? So your representation shows pretty generic signs. That's not going to be the case. You're going to put up branding signs on those kiosks, whatever they're going to be.
Based on the tenant's identity, we do have a list of things that are prohibited.
Yes.
But we usually don't tell a tenant who has a brand color that's blue, they can't use blue, even though it makes the light look fuzzy. So we try, we try to respect what the brand that they've identified that helps connect them to their customers.
Okay. Mr. Boyle, you have a
Sure, I was just mentioning that, you know, the applicant has provided additional pages for the tenant design guidelines, which staff requested, and those are included in the packet, and those are, those are in conformance with the other signs in the interior of the center.
Yeah, no, it's pretty clear. I suspect that out of all of this, that might be something that comes back to us in public commentary, if the signs are objectionable, you know, and so forth, but God only knows what might enter there. So I don't have any other commentary except to say that it's surprising that there is no public commentary. And the staff report said that there were no comments on the kiosks that you have there, the stands at the, at the mall.
That is correct.
What does that say about the town of Corder Madera? I don't know. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
So with that said, is there any public comment for this agenda item? I see none, so we will close the public comment section of this and bring it back up to the commission to discuss and discern what we want to about this. And as I get it, the way the resolution is written, we are in one resolution approving all three elements of this, the preliminary and precise plan, the design review, and the conditional use permit.
Correct.
Right, okay. So we don't need to do three votes on it. It is one motion, one vote for this, as it is. So Phyllis, your thoughts about this application, please?
I think rather than it saying something about the people of Corder Madera, it says something about the way Mesa Rich designs things and puts their projects together, because we have had very little problems over the years with it. I think it's a good project. It looks very good. No one is going to miss the tower. I think the only time it ever had any use, wasn't there an opening into the second floor of the store at one time? That was then closed off because there were concerns about people stealing things. It serves no purpose. I think the seating, the kiosks and everything add to the center, and I certainly can approve it.
All right. Dr. Bundy, your thoughts about this?
Looks like a good project. Very, even before it was closed, the tower was closed off. I very seldom saw anybody go up there, and I don't think I'd been up there since it opened.
That's
That's it.
Pretty trim. Nicola, your thoughts, please?
I concur with the previous two. This is an improvement and will serve very well the intent, and thank you for removing the tower.
Dan, do you care to stir the waters?
Not, not, not too many ripples. I should have asked, are the kiosks prefab or are they going to be built in place? Okay. And one is currently being slated for food use, and the others are not? You're embedding in the right to do food at now or later? Since you guys are tired, don't wait.
If a retail, if it was a retail walk-in kiosk, it would have doors to allow you to access it. If it changed to food, that opening would change to a pass-through, if that's what the tenant needed. Otherwise, it would be the same shell.
Okay, and then the lights, the tall lights that you show, those ones? And are those similar to what you already have, or is that a departure and a change to a new type of fixture?
Pretty similar to what we have. What we have does not comply with night sky. And we wanted to go to LED lights, so we're changing it. We thought we could change just to LED guts, keep the housing, but it wouldn't have been night sky compliant, so we're changing the head, keeping the poles. We're actually relocating all the poles to get them in optimal locations.
Yeah, I mean, my thought, I'm not a lighting expert, and I think Peter talked about the, you know, the light itself, but it looks, and I'm not trying to be critical, but it looks like a heater. And it looks kind of tall. And it, you know, there's a certain quality and kind of a subtle elegance of what you're doing here and some of your materials. And I'm just thinking that those light fixtures just aren't in keeping with that. And I'm not suggesting you put in more, but is that the right design? Because I think it actually plays a fairly material role in kind of the aesthetic of what's happening there. So, that's just how it's set up. You know, I don't have a replacement of it, but, you know, there's, there's a lot of fixtures like that that have a little bit of artistic integrity, and this one seems kind of, it's kind of plain to me.
Phil, could you go back to the before and after picture? There you go. So they're
That's your before?
Yeah, they're, they're the same height. The actual head might be a couple inches taller, but the pole is the same. But we kind of shook the tree on the LED, similar style, night sky compliant, and this popped up.
Yeah, it's, it's not the operation of the light, just the look of it. You don't want to go with a Boston, you know, gas lamp of some sort. A little New Orleans feel or something, you know, something?
We have, the thing is, we have these light poles throughout the center.
I'll tell you what, if you come up with a different idea and come back later and ask for it to be traded out, I'd be happy to look at it.
And you would help pay for the new lights?
It won't be more expensive necessarily. I just, I think it's kind of, for me, it's kind of plain.
I agree with you in concept, because I wasn't happy with what we found, but this is what we could find that checked all the boxes.
You guys have like a hundred shopping centers, so come on now. Anyway, we'll work on it. So, the last one is, and I just want to say this for the record, because Phyllis, I think in the previous have mentioned this, your furniture plan is a concept plan. It's shown on the plans, and sometimes people interpret that to be a formal furniture plan, and they get a little upset if it doesn't lay out exactly like you've got it. So, not everything shown on these plans is your intention, i.e. the furniture is playsetters for now. The walkways and the openness obviously has to meet whatever the requirements are for accessibility, but they could be modified slightly as well, so.
That's correct. The seating will not ever, that's the way it's intended to go in, but it could, it could adjust based on how it gets set up that day.
I think at one point at the last one, we wanted a certain types of plants and certain pots and certain spots, right? So, I just want to make sure that we know what we're approving.
Well, from here, what I saw in the roadmap was that there's a path of travel that they have to maintain.
No, I understand.
And they're writing that into the conditions of approval, that they have to maintain that path of travel through there. So, they can't abandon that.
But I think, again, I don't want to be too detailed, but as a group, sometimes there's open discussions about how deep into some of these visuals you're going. And some of it's there as playsetters for discussion and intention as opposed to very specifics. And the furniture plan falls in that category.
And I, if I might, I appreciate you bringing that up, actually, because the furniture plan, that's the other thing that's, that's very important for us, is that we have the flexibility to move things around. We might do events, small events, and how those, those seating areas and umbrellas get moved around, yeah, it's important that we don't have to set them in one place and stay there. They will definitely need to be moved around to accommodate different things that happen at the center every day. Thanks for that.
Do you have anything? Okay, so.
I would just say, there is a fixed seating element as well that is there in the, so there's, there's a variety, there's fixed seating and movable seating with umbrellas that, so I'd say the movable aspect of that is what is variable in that plan. The landscape as well is obviously not, not variable, it's fixed.
Well, in this plan, we're gonna hand out rain codes for the bad weather. That's your problem to deal with, and the stores will just close down. But I would ask then that there's a motion to approve this with the condition that the lighting be installed at 3,500 Kelvin.
Is that for, is that for all lighting?
These Saturn II cutoff LEDs, these are the tall ones, that are the, the ones that I believe they are showing, yeah, the tall lamps at, they show them at a 5,000 Kelvin and
Thirty-five five.
They ought to be 3,500 to get the white out.
Okay.
Great. So, is there a motion as such or with any additions to approve this resolution? Number 16017?
I will move resolution 16017 in the matter of preliminary and precise plan amendment number PL 2016-0050-PDP, design review plan, review number PL 2016-0038DR, and conditional use permit number PL 2016-0056-UP for modifications to the center court area of the village of Corte Madera, including the remove of the tower, the installation of three independent retail kiosks, new planted areas, seat walls and ramps, and the lighting be changed to, what's the, 3,500 Kelvin?
Yes.
Second.
Thank you.
Commissioner Metcalf?
Aye.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yes.
Commissioner Chase?
Aye.
Commissioner McCadden?
Aye.
Commissioner Caldera?
Aye.
Thank you very much, gentlemen. Have at it. Thank you very much. I think our final item is a small item, and we'll let these guys walk out of the room for just a couple of minutes. Okay. So, thank you, guys, for hanging in there for 136 Summit Drive. We're here to review your revised landscape plan, and that it's back before us after we asked to have a more intensive planting plan that did something to shield the house. So, Mr. Boyle?
Yes, the project was previously approved for remodel, addition and remodel to the home at 136 Summit Drive. I do want to correct a typo in both the applicant's materials as well as my staff report. The, at maturity, the, the trees are said to reach four to eight feet in height. In fact, the, the correct number is 14 to 18 feet in height. So that was a, so the applicant corrected his, his letter, and I should, and so the staff report should be corrected as well. Again, the proposed landscape plan, the intention per the planning commission was to provide screening of the home and the addition from both coming down Summit and also along the, right around as you make the sharp corner of Summit. And the applicant has provided a landscape plan showing all the existing plantings as well as the proposed plantings, and then photo simulations of how these plantings will look after, after a number of years, and showing, one can assess that. So staff has reviewed the landscape plan and believe it meets the intent of the planning commission's request, and it's really a business item. It wasn't, this wasn't noticed. Again, the home was, the home was approved, so it's, it's a business item, and so staff recommends approval.
Approval by a motion, and, yeah, essentially.
Yeah.
So, all right, I've looked at the plans and the old photos. Would the applicant like to make a statement?
Hello, I'm Chris Storman, the architect for the project. I'm afraid the designer of the landscape wasn't able to be here today, but I'm happy to answer any questions. But the intent was to try and handle some of the issues that came up in our last meeting, which had to do with providing some screening for the house on the uphill perspective, and then where possible, on the downhill perspective. There's not a lot of grade there between the fence and the hill and the street, but we're trying to accommodate that. We, we did, of course, we were trying to accommodate that with trees that meet the VMP plan, as well as trying to work with some growth along the side planting, along the bottom of the wall, along the street. So, we're trying to achieve what we could with, within that range. One of the criteria was to try and find a, a tree that would be relatively quick growing and have the ability to create a screen within a reasonable timeframe, but we considered several types of trees, and this was one that was recommended. So, we're happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you very much. So, Nicola, do you have any questions for the applicant about this insertion of planting on the site up there?
In, we question, on, on this page, that the growth is shown, is basically at the end, once it's fully grown, pretty much, that's what.
But likely, they're gonna grow to be that size fairly rapidly, I mean, say, five years or less than that, somewhere around there. That was part of the reason that that was a suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay, Dan?
I don't have any comments.
Okay. Phyllis, your thoughts about this?
I think it looks good, and I like that tree fern very much.
Yeah. Dr. Bundy, I don't know that you were around for this original consideration, were you?
I was not.
No.
But it looks good.
Yeah. All right, answer. Okay. So, Dan, your thoughts about these plantings that are in here?
I'm, I'm, I'm fine with it.
Okay.
I can render an opinion, but, you know, you've got a tough condition as you come up the hill there. I think there was an encroachment on the corner of the building, and there was a lot of talk about this corner, and I think, if my memory serves me, Peter, it was your, this was your baby, so I'm gonna defer to you. So, this looks fine to me.
Thank you, Dan. I've looked back over the photographs, and I think you guys have put some material in there as best you can to do the shielding of the growth. So, I think it's an honest effort, and I think that it will be incumbent upon the town to make sure that the stuff is installed at the close of the project, at the very least, and that the final approval is incumbent upon this being in place. So, I don't think that that is, it was either, I don't know if that was in the original conditions of approval about landscaping, but it should be in the approval of the project that you guys put forth.
The staff report that this, you know, the, these two sheets will be incorporate, will need to be incorporated into the building permit.
Right.
So, when, when, when the project is final by the planning department, we look at, at the building and the landscaping.
Great. All right. With that said, do I hear any kind of motion regarding this, this addition to the application?
So, motion to add those two sheets to the previously approved, sorry, I'm lost, previously approved project. I don't have a reference. Oh, yeah, sorry. Previously approved 136 Summit Drive project.
Second?
What were you about to say, Adam?
Well, it'd be good if the commission just can clarify and finalize that this satisfies the prior condition of approval that was placed on the project when this project was approved, so that the commission is acknowledging its satisfaction.
Yeah, and I think that it does do that.
Okay.
We're assenting to this addition to the, to the building permit application. I think it satisfies the need for the landscaping on the property, and you're responsible to get it in. So that's great. Thank you.
Seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. Natives, islanders, and, so here we are at the point where I would ask for commissioners' reports. Nicola, you were at the sleeper the other night.
Yeah, sure, okay. I'll try to make it as interesting as possible. There was not, not much going on, except there was one item on the, on the calendar that was, let me find my notes, if you don't mind. Okay, so the item was item 5.5 of the consent calendar, which was a possible refinancing of the 30-year 2006 Park Madera Center certificate of participation. And there was a lot of discussions, and it was decided, due to the difficulty of the subject, and everybody was launching ideas and opinions, that the, legally and financially the town could start considering, sorry, that it was better to postpone this item until the next town council meeting, to even ponder, decide whether to vote on the refinancing, and if the refinancing was a viable option at this point. And what I found interesting, oh, and Councilmember Condon even suggested to agendize this item to after the summer, since she felt would be important, that all town, the whole town may want to be involved, given the, the subject, that the, you know, the size of the subject. And I found interesting, I've learned, probably most of you know this, but that the law, the parcel was purchased in 2006 for $10 million, and possibly was double of the real value at the time. However, according to some records, the reasoning behind it was mainly two. One was possibility of building the new Corte Madera Town Hall and to prevent the construction of multifamily residential complex and related traffic impact. Okay, that's one of the reasons they put on the table why they think the town purchased that parcel. And B, there was the possibility that the Larsburg Corte Madera School District, which apparently owns 25% of the town park grounds, was going to expand Neil Common, and so therefore reducing the park. And so the time, the buying of the Park Madera Center was an opportunity to expand the park if necessary, if such a, you know, expansion of the school would have occurred. And basically, the, this agenda item stopped at this point, and then they moved on something else, and again, they're gonna bring it back, I think, on the next town council meeting. And there was not much else on that meeting. And there was not much else on that meeting.
If I may add, there are proponents in the public who are discussing the sale of it and that any number of potential uses be considered for the property, which would put it in the purview of the zoning ordinance for that property, and what do we do with it, and how do we condition if that were to ever happen? So it seemed as if there was some ideas put forth that it be developed in a way that the town deemed beneficial, including any number of uses. But that I heard mentioned partnership, I heard mentioned sale, I heard mentioned keeping it. All of those seem to be on the table. It was something that I thought might interest the commission at some point, and it certainly will put a lot of work on the planning department at some point, should that move forward in some way. And the other thing of interest was just the condemnation proceeding that took place, public nuisance over there.
Yeah. Indeed.
It's going to be...
What's the amount of debt remaining with the property?
2006, and now they're, four years.
Currently, it's about $9 million, I believe.
That's right, $9 million. And they had it assessed at $12 million.
And just in case anyone's watching, we didn't do any condemnation action. We took an abatement of a nuisance.
Abatement, excuse me, yes.
It's okay. I don't want anyone who might still be awakened, watching that, thinking that the town is condemning anybody's property.
That's right, the abatement action, right. And I retired before that action was complete. But nonetheless, Adam now has his hands fulls with abatement actions. But the lawn was cut. So besides that, I'm going to ask the director if he has some items for us to know about.
Just one thing, I did pass out just now, a, basically a press release from the Association of Bay Area Governments and MTC regarding Plan Bay Area 2040. They are doing a series of open houses for the public to comment and learn about Plan Bay Area 2040, also to weigh in specifically on three different scenarios that are being considered to frame or provide parameters for the growth that is expected to occur between now and 2040. One of those public meetings and open houses is going to be at our community center next Saturday, is June 4th, and I believe it's 8:30 to 1:00 in the morning. So it is a, something right here to start discussing the, the basic idea, there's three different scenarios. One is more of a dispersed growth model, where employment and population growth is dispersed broadly around the region. There's one that's more of a, sort of a, the mid, the other extreme is more focusing on vast majority of growth in our largest cities in the Bay Area, Oakland, San Francisco, and San Jose. And the middle one is more directing growth to mid-sized cities and the larger cities and some of the corridors between Oakland and San Jose, sort of the triangle formed by Oakland, San Jose, and San Francisco, and South Bay. So those will be discussed. They are, the next step is that they will be picking a preferred scenario out of those three, with which ultimately, as you know, this does affect a lot of the regional policy in terms of transportation and housing, funding, and other factors related to that, so, from a regional planning level. So just wanted to make sure you're aware. I will be putting this, we'll be putting this out on the website for the general public as a newsflash item, and trying to get it out to as many people as possible before the meeting, so that they are aware and can come to, at least one that's very local and very nearby. Many people can come learn more about that, as this, this will become more of a, I think, a hot topic, starting from this point going forward.
With that said, there must be an agenda somewhere for, was that two and a half hours, three and a half hours?
Four and a half hours.
Four and a half hours of meeting?
Well...
All the other meetings are two hours.
So it's an open house, so it's really intended to come, if there's, I don't believe there's any start actual, you know, agenda through the meeting. It's come, there'll be things set up to learn about, ask questions. I think it's more of an informal, come when you can during that time period, and learn more about what's going on there. There'll be different booths set up, so you can speak directly to A-BAG planners and the like.
Is the smart train in their sites or is it part of this discussion?
No.
Do you suspect, no? And Governor Brown's recent statements, is that a part of this, do you suppose, or will be?
No, it, no, it's not. This is very much a long-term regional planning effort, and it's part of actually implementing SB 375 with, related to greenhouse gas reductions and sustainable communities. So that's what it's really implementing. The other, the other items, I think, are on separate tracks, so...
Will we get our housing allocations?
Yeah, there's, it's related to that as well.
Right, and they're going to come see us even though we withdrew? Okay. Nice of them. So that said, that sounds like that's the end of your report of various things for us. And next time that we meet, we're going to be talking about your draft of a corridor study. Here, so...
Correct. And just on that, we are going to be, the goal right now is to get that out to you at the same time we issue the public notice for that, so by June 3rd is the, is the goal, which would give more than 10 days, I think, for...
Fabulous, okay. All right, so we would be out of announcements and into approval of the meeting minutes. Does anybody have any adjustments to the meeting minutes? What meeting minutes?
No, they're going to be on the next, on the next meeting.
I think we could adjourn, Peter.
So, that sounds like a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second. Aye.
Good night, Peter.